Councilmember Self is on her way and I'm sure the others are getting here soon. So why don't we call this special meeting to order of, what day is today? February 3rd, 2011. If you can have a real call, please.
Councilmember Francisco, Hachkiss, House.
Here.
Gross.
Here.
Self, White.
Here.
And Mayor Schneider.
Here. So any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And we're on to the work session. It's the budget again. So on fiscal year 2012, special work, budget work session. Mr. Armstrong.
Okay, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Today is the kickoff for the council's consideration of the budget for fiscal year 2012. And that's the year that begins on July 1st. And although it's a kickoff for you, it hasn't been a kickoff for us. We've actually been working on this since really late fall. I want to kind of set the context a little bit because I think it's important to remember where we are now and how we've gotten here. I look back at 2008, especially at September 2008, when the world economy crashed and the US economy crashed. And we saw at a local level just a precipitous drop in all of our major revenue sources. And Bob's going to go over the data. And ever since that time, we've been working to, you know, make corrective actions, reduce the size of the organization. We worked with our employee organizations to generate significant levels of concessions in order to keep the cities, you know, keep the city in good financial condition. And I think we've been successful in that, but with significant impacts on the organization. We're starting to recover, but it's important to remember that we still have a long ways to go. Our revenues, some are coming back, like bed tax, pretty healthy. They're pretty healthy. Others, like sales tax, still a little anemic. Property tax, anemic. And we've used a lot of one-time measures to balance the budget. We've also significantly reduced staffing, and you'll see that throughout the organization. So we still have a long ways to go, but it's important to remember the context we're in. And from a governmental finance standpoint, I think this is the most difficult period local governments have seen throughout the country since the Great Depression. And it continues to be that way. And actually, I think as the spring goes along and you see other agencies and how they're dealing with this, we're actually going to look pretty good relative to them because I think we jumped on the problem more quickly and took corrective actions more quickly than some of the other ones who just kept pushing the ball forward. Today, just so you know what we're going to go over, and we had a little difficulty here, how much background do we give you? But we think it's important to talk a lot about just what the city's financial structure is, kind of go through the, you know, basics of budgeting in terms of enterprise operations and in their role. Talk about reserve balances. Then we'll talk about the impacts of the recession. And then we're going to give you our preview for the budget. We've also identified what we believe are priorities for 2012. And we'll look for feedback from you in terms of if we've identified priorities that are similar to what you believe the priorities of the city are, and then ask for feedback. But a lot of this will be to kind of give you a basis of how we got here. And then we'll specifically go in all of our assumptions for next year and what we see. And again, I think it's important to remember, this is still a work in progress. We still have, you know, we'll be presenting the budget to you in April. But we, I have not yet reviewed any of the departmental budgets. They're still preparing them. A lot of our revenue estimates, for example, sales tax are based on data that's still, the best, the most accurate data we have for sales tax is only September. We have no data yet for Christmas and won't have it until March. So we've still got, some of the data is pretty preliminary. Even the property tax information from the county for next year is not real strong. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Samario to talk about the financial issues, and then I'll come back and talk about priorities.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. So we are going to start with some review of the financial structure. And for a lot of you or some of you, this is going to be just refreshing you on how the city's organized from a fund perspective and a budgetary perspective. So I apologize if some of this is a little elementary. I think it's important to go through it anyway. Just to start with some basic stuff, you know, what a fund is. We've had a lot of conversations about that in the last year, about the various funds and the restrictions. But just to start off, to define what a fund is. And it's sort of like, basically, it's a, in our general ledger accounts, we account for a lot of activities into their, sort of their own little entities. So we have a fund for one particular operation, another fund for another operation, and they're very distinct, their own set of accounts. And so that's important that we do that for a number of reasons. Primarily because each has a separate purpose and some, and separate restrictions. Fund accounting actually started, just incidentally, about 70, 80 years ago, in the turn of the century, when there were a lot more, a lot of corruption in the big cities. What they decided to do was to restrict those funds. They created separate checking accounts for all the various restricted revenues, but became very cumbersome. So the fund accounting concept actually drove out of the separate checking accounts. We now have one checking account with separate funds. So in the city of Santa Barbara, we have over 30 separately budgeted funds. And that's a lot. And you can, when you look at our budget document, you can see that we have to account for those separately and, because they have different restrictions. The categories of funds. We have one general fund, and that's what most people think about when they think about local government. Funded primarily from taxes, that's an important thing to note. It's in city of Santa Barbara, we have property taxes, sales taxes, utility users taxes, and bed taxes. In, in just about every city in the state of California in the country, their general fund is funded from taxes. The mix may be different, and the proportion may be different, but that's largely what funds their operations. And it does pay for those traditional services associated with local government, public safety, meaning fire, police, libraries, parks, recreation, building and planning, and so forth. We also have another category called special revenue funds. And as the name indicates, it accounts for restricted revenues. Some examples, and we have a number of these, the streets fund, which includes transportation programs and has a lot of grant funds that we receive from federal and state agencies. Those are restricted funds. Our redevelopment agency is a special revenue fund because those revenues are restricted by state law. Our creeks fund, which is the 2% we get in our bed tax, restricted revenues by law. And then you see the transportation sales tax or Measure A, community development block grant, the county library fund, and the wildland fire benefit assessment district, all special revenue funds because those funds are restricted. You're familiar, of course, with our enterprise funds. And distinction between the other funds is that it's funded almost entirely from user fees. No taxes, the, no grant revenues per se, but a lot of it is just the fees that we charge for those services, whether it be water, wastewater, or trash. And they are managed and operated a lot, like the private sector, a lot of businesses on the private side. That's how we account for things, that's how we manage those operations. And as you know, they're very capital intensive. Our wastewater fund and water funds, lots of facilities, a lot of infrastructure, unlike the general fund, which is more labor-related or intensive. And the fees are designed to cover all costs of providing those services, not just the day-to-day costs, but costs that are really kind of hidden, the depreciation, for example, of that infrastructure is a cost that we have to measure and make sure we're recovering for those things, and that's built into the fees. And then lastly, except for the golf and downtown parking fund, as you know, the monies are legally restricted within those funds. And of course, a big topic of conversation.
Excuse me, Bob, can I ask a question?
Of course.
You say we cover all costs in the fund. Does that include retirement costs for personnel?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkiss, that includes all costs, labor costs, purse costs, everything.
Thank you.
Sure. And just to kind of give you a sense of magnitude, relative magnitude, citywide numbers, we, the general fund is the largest single fund, and even bigger than any category of funds. It represents 43% of our overall city budget, the operating budget of $253 million. Enterprise funds in total make up 30%. Our special revenue funds, a fairly good slice of 20%. And then lastly, our internal service funds represent 7%. So looking at some financial framework or perspective, focusing on the general fund, starting with where the money comes from. This is a chart I'm not sure all of you have seen before, but this is a chart that shows, or pie chart that shows how our sales taxes are allocated in the county of Santa Barbara. As you know, we have a tax rate of eight and three quarters, three quarters percent. And you can see that most of that money goes to the state of California, six cents. The cities and counties get one cent. That represents about 11% of the total, so not a very big portion. That's the Bradley Burns portion of one cent.
Actually, Bob, when you say cities and counties get one cent, do we get half a cent? Do we get one, I mean, do we each get one cent?
Sure. Madam Mayor, we each get one cent for those sales within our jurisdictions. And you can see the rest of the money goes to the county health and welfare programs, half a cent. We do get some money into our police department, Prop 172, public safety, that's half a cent. And then county transportation fund, a quarter cent, and then Measure A, half a cent. Yeah, and the Prop 172, that, that's money that we get. It was, in my opinion, it was sort of a bone that was thrown our way when the state took some of our property taxes in their, in the 90s, the shift of, the ERAF shift. And so they increased sales taxes to provide some additional funding to public safety.
Yeah, and of that half cent, about 94% of it goes to the county, and we get about, I think, six, what, maybe six one-hundredths of that. So we get very little of that. Most of it goes to the county to pay for district attorney costs and, and public safety costs.
And as you probably know, the six-ten sales tax is scheduled to be lowered by 1% starting this July. That's part of what the governor is proposing, to extend those, one of those tax increases that was designed to be temporary. On looking at property taxes allocation, where $1 collected countywide goes, you can see that most of the money goes to schools, 45 cents on the dollar. Just 12 cents goes to, goes to cities in the county. And then 11 cents to special districts, RDA's get five, and then the county gets 27 cents on the dollar. So again, the cities, when you think about property taxes, a lot of people assume that most of it just goes to the city, but it only, actually, a very small portion does.
So before, because there's been a lot of discussion about RDA and eliminating the RDA from the state proposal, out of the five cents, what would happen to those five cents?
A good question, Madam Mayor. We've calculated that of the money that's currently going to redevelopment agencies, the vast majority will go to schools. So for, within the city of Santa Barbara, we're expecting that $5 or $6 million per year will go to the schools from what's currently being collected by the redevelopment agency.
Right, but if you were to break it down, is it three of the five cents would go to the schools and, you know, like, how would it, is it six, you know?
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how that's going to, in terms of just.
How that all adds up?
Yeah. But I know the general fund, city's general fund, will get about $1.4 million allocated to it from what's currently being generated by the RDA.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sure.
So Bob, just to clarify that if I could. RDA disappears at some point, maybe sooner, maybe later. But those funds don't disappear. Some of them, a smaller portion, goes to the city. You just said 1. something million. And then a bunch more goes to the schools, local schools, city schools, county schools?
That's correct.
Oh, city school?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Generally, I think we're assuming that it would be distributed out with the same proportion here, except for probably the special districts wouldn't get any. So you can, but pretty much on the, on the same proportion that you see up here. So the RDA would go away and then would get spread among the others.
Madam Mayor, there's debt service that the RDA takes on as well. How does that fit into this chart?
Sure.
And how, what portions, et cetera?
The, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, this, the city's redevelopment agency currently receives about $20 million a year in tax increment revenue. About $8 million of that.
And where does that show up here?
That's part of the RDA slice. So the city slice, the RDA slice is $20 million.
Okay, so we'll get to that when we see the numbers, we'll see the, how much, and then how it's dealt with.
Yeah, but just, just to kind of finish the thought, so the RDA has about $8 million that it needs, or when you, from the $20 million, it spends about $8 million a year toward debt service of existing bonds.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Samario, one more last question on the RDA. So I assume that one cent of that five still is set aside for the affordable housing?
They're currently about $4 million a year is received, the, under the governor's proposal, that would go away. And any existing funds that they have would likely be required to be transferred to the housing authority.
So it would not go back into the slice that comes?
No.
Thank you.
Sure. So looking at our revenues, you can see total revenues this year that we have budgeted are about $102.4 million. The biggest share of that are tax revenues, as I sort of suggested before. What I think is interesting here is that in prior years, that slice has always been somewhere in the order of 60 to 65%. And you can see that it's now below 60. That's the first time I've ever seen it below 60%, primarily because our tax revenues are down just from, obviously, the last couple of years. So it's kind of interesting to see that's getting, becoming a shrinking portion of our overall revenue base. But it still represents about $62 million per year. Service charges represent just 9.3% of our total revenues. And this is important because when we're trying to find ways to help with any budget gap, obviously, reducing costs is one way, but also trying to raise revenues is another way. We try to deal with that, except that we have limited options with our fees and charges because they're a small portion, and we can raise them, and it does help. And we try to keep our fees and charges consistent with the cost of providing those services. So as labor costs go up, we try to match those with our fee increases. But sometimes you're kind of dealing with market forces so that you can't just assume you can raise them and then generate those additional revenues because participation, for example, in recreation programs can often go down, and you end up sort of defeating the purpose. And we saw some of that, for example, in the golf course, while that's an enterprise fund, that was potentially some of the reason why maybe there's lost revenues. Interfund charges, we actually recover from all the other funds in the city. Within the general fund, we recover 17.1% of our total revenues. It's about $17 million. So this includes, for example, the overhead that we charge to all of our enterprise funds for the services that are provided centrally within the general fund, that's finance, city attorney's office, city administrator's office, and so forth. Those, those costs, to the extent they benefit enterprise funds, we charge them for those services, and we recover them as a revenue, and that's part of this slice. Included in here also are the charges to the airport from the fire department for the aircraft rescue and firefighting services. That's about $3 or $4 million per year. But again, the point is, we do have charges to other funds, and, and it's a fair portion of what we recover, or our total revenues, I mean. And then other revenues, total $15 million. You can see one of those is the top right, the anticipated year-end variance. That's the, the amount that we budget each year. There used to be a bigger portion of our revenues because we, and let me just say what it is. It's the amounts that we've assumed and budgeted to, to be realized at the end of each year in savings on our expenditures because we have attrition, and we always have some savings there. And historically, it also included what we expected to generate by way of revenue surpluses, so revenues over budget. And in years past, we would generally regenerate revenues over budget because we budgeted conservatively. We weren't, we weren't pushing the envelope if we were, and the economy was better. But now that number only represents what we expect to generate by way of expenditure savings because we're no longer expecting surpluses in the revenues. We're hoping that the, we're just hoping that they actually meet budget and our expectations at this point. Then you can see right next to that is 2.3%, a number called for concessions. When we adopted the budget, you may recall, we had not secured concessions from police and fire, and that represented about 2. something million dollars we were hoping to achieve. And we did achieve that ultimately, but it was later in the year. And so this number here is a revenue that we won't ever realize. It will actually be realized as expenditure savings throughout the year, now that those concessions are in place.
Madam Mayor, excuse me, but go back to interfund charges for a second. That always sounds to me like taking money out of one pocket and putting it into another, same pair of pants.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hachkiss, actually, I don't think that's the case because we're, I'll give you an example. If we look at our airport fund, we and the city's general fund, whether it be finance department with, for payroll services, paying bills, or in the city attorney's office, legal services, those are services that we provide to them that they should pay for. And so we charge them for those services, and it's a separate fund. The airport fund is an enterprise fund, restricted fund. So, you know, we can't just, I don't see us putting money from one pocket to another. It's a legitimate cost that if they were in the private sector alone, they would have to incur those costs and, you know, hire their own legal staff and their own accounting staff. So we charge it for those services based on a cost allocation plan we do every couple of years that's in accordance with federal law. So those, I think those are appropriate charges, and, yeah, I don't see it as you defined it.
Madam Mayor, having worked in the water and sewer systems for the number of years, it was, it became apparent to me that the, the general fund likewise cannot go in, can't make use of the enterprise funds, of the, of the revenue generated by water rates and so forth. There's a, there's a firewall between those revenues and, and the general fund. So this is the one way that, that the compensation occurs for all that infrastructure that would be much more expensive to provide if each enterprise fund had its own attorney, had its own administrator, et cetera.
Okay, now shifting gears, where the money goes. We just talked about where the money comes from. And we've, you've seen this before, and you can see of the total $102 million, most of that goes toward public safety, fire and police, 21% for fire and 31% for police. Very typical in local government where most of the monies or resources are for public safety. The operating departments represent 33% of the budget at $34.2 million. That includes community development, public works, parks and recreation, and library. And then lastly, but not least, administrative departments represent about 10%, or $10.5 million. That's CO, city administrator's office, administrative services, the city attorney's office, mayor and council, and finance. And then lastly, we have a little slice called non-departmental, which I know the mayor loves. And within this department is our, where we account for our debt service costs. We still have an outstanding debt in the general fund related to the, this building here, the improvements we made to this building a number of years ago. We also account for our capital program here. It's money that we transfer into a separate fund, and you can see it's only a half million dollars this year, which is well below what we've done historically. We also include within this department, community promotions, monies to old Spanish days, summer solstice, and so forth. And also, we have here the appropriated reserve at almost $900,000. And I'll do, I will note that that's an unusually high number for appropriated reserves. You may recall that we put a cushion of about $700,000 in there, with the adopted budget just as a contingency. We also added some money in there for, to allow the police department to do some over hiring this year. So we provided that money in this appropriated reserve account. This is another slide that, I guess in different ways, we've, you've seen this, but I think it's important to show, when you just think about our tax revenues, which are really the ones that we, we have no control over, they go up and down with the economy, it's about $62 million per year. How are those monies allocated? Where do those monies go? And you can see that because certain departments generate revenues, and that's part of the reason because they're designed to generate revenues, such as parks and recreation, community development, they do generate fees and charges and other revenues. Administration actually generates a fair amount of revenue because of overhead. For example, in finance, we generally, we recover about 60% of our overall costs because we charge this to enterprise funds. And it just, so it happens that more than the majority of our costs are, or services are provided to other funds. So when you look at what's the net subsidy from those tax revenues or net costs, you can see that the administrative departments represent just 3.5% or consume just 3.5% of those tax revenues. Operating departments consume about 25%, and public safety about 72. So you can see that while public safety, for example, is 50% of the budget on the, just looking at expenditures, in terms of the amount of revenues that tax revenues they consume, it's far more than that. And this is current year. And if you look at the next slide, this is 10 years ago, you can see what the subsidies were back then. And you can see there's been a, you know, a change in that. Whereas public safety was 70, was 62% in 2001, in terms of how much they consumed of tax revenues, they are now closer to 72. Looking at general fund reserves, so first, the red line you see at the top, that represents the reserves we're supposed to have per city policy, and that policy was adopted back in 1995. And you can see that, starting in 2004, if you follow the red line, we were required to have, in 2004, around 23, 22, 23 million dollars. And that number just grows, has grown over time because that, the required policies are a function of our budget. So as our budget grows, so do our required reserves, because it's in total 25% of our, is the required reserve for disasters and for budgetary reserves. What's interesting is, back in 2004, we had $27.5 million in actual reserves, which represented a surplus of almost $5 million. And over time, those two lines went in opposite directions. Our actual reserves went down, all the way down to 2008, which is the low point, whereas our required reserves should have gone up, which just expanded that gap, if you will. Today, pursuant to our city policy, we should have $25.8 million in reserves. And you can see it's actually lower than it was in 2008 because our budget has shrunk. We've been, we eliminated a lot of positions, we've made a lot of cuts, so our required reserves have also gone down. At the end of last year, June 30, 2010, our last fiscal year that we closed, we had $18.2 million in reserves. So that difference is about $7 million, $7.6 million in, in a gap, if you are under unfunded reserves, which is actually an improvement from last year. Last year, you might recall, we were about $9.2 million under what we should have had in our policy reserves. So we've done better, in part because we had a surplus, or we, in part because, again, our reserve requirements are going down.
Madam Mayor? So the gap between our mandated reserves and, of course, our actual reserves, starting in 2008, was that because we anticipated revenues to have a certain graph, and that reversed at that point in time?
Yeah, it's two things. You know, because of the decline in revenues, we've had to make cuts to the organization, the general fund. So the operating budget of the general fund has actually decreased. And so since reserves are a percentage of that, the reserve requirements go down. So starting in 2009, when we first made, started making a lot of cuts, and we made about $10 million of cuts back in 2009, the budget goes down, sort of the reserve requirements. And in 2010, they went down even further because we've had additional cuts this past year. So does that answer your question? And as the, the budget goes down, so do our required reserves?
No, I, yeah, I get that. I was just curious because in '06 and '07, it seems like the trend started before, I mean, '06 is when things started to kind of back off a little bit in terms of the economy. I just wondered what our revenue projections were like at that point in time.
Yeah, and you're speaking to the actual reserves. So I was, I was speaking to what the required reserves. So the actual reserves, why they went down over the last several years for a number of factors. Some of it was by design. You know, when we started, you know, hitting some down part, downtimes, particularly in the early 2000s, 2001 and 2002, we were starting to use some reserves by design to help sort of transition into a smaller organization. But most recently, you know, we basically just spent more than we brought in. I mean, I don't know how else to say it, but.
And primarily, that's a result of wage and benefit increases that were granted that we couldn't afford. And especially in that '04 to about '06 period. We just, you know, we, in the negotiations, that's how it worked out, and they happened mid-year, and it started consuming reserves.
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, Mr. House, go ahead.
And Mr. Samario, I'll feel with that chart. So one of the things I do take from that, the green part of the chart there and the blue, which is that little bit of capital that we have, so we haven't, I mean, we've really stayed away from that.
That's, that's a good point. Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, we, you can see that the million dollars for capital is a fixed amount of million dollars that has not changed, has not been used. The green bar is the, is the, for the disasters, that's 15% of the operating budget. We have not needed or haven't tapped into those reserves. Where we've been consuming reserves in terms of what the policy reserves are, is the budgetary reserve. Excuse me. And in some ways, that's what it's for. It's supposed to be there to help to respond to economic downturn, but in this case, other reasons were involved in why those went down.
Right, and I guess, I guess, and I think that's a combination of reasons, right? I mean, in other words, I remember when we were in discussions in 2006, and we were having these exact discussions, we talked about the negotiated agreements with the, and how we were going to make that work out over time. You showed us over a period of time, based on the trend lines, that we would be able to recover. But the economy really turned down, and it multiplied the effect that Mr. Armstrong just mentioned ago, the effect of having made those agreements and then having the revenue stream just sink dramatically. Am I understanding that correctly?
You want to take that one? I think that's part of it. I think, I think it's, it was wage and benefit increases that we couldn't afford. And then in '07, '08, the economy started to go south. And I think, quite honestly, I think the other thing is, is when we had 25 or 30 million dollars in the bank, it was probably a little easier because those are pretty healthy reserves. And I, and I do think, even at $18.2 million, a lot of communities would be very happy with this level of reserves in terms of a percentage of the general fund. So I think we were, probably felt we could be a little more generous and hope that the economy would improve. And I actually, as I look at this, the good news is, is in the, in the midst of the recession, the last since 2008, basically, the reserves have stayed the same and gone up slightly, which means we really applied the brakes to spending. We got much more conservative because we knew, hey, we're at the budgetary reserves, and this is serious. and this is serious. Whereas, most agencies since two thousand and eight have actually really consumed reserves. So we've, we've really, you know, the success story to me is, is that, yeah, we've done a good job of responding to the recession quickly and making the adjustments we needed to make. But back from that two fours, two thousand and four to two thousand and seven, I think, it was a combination of the wage and benefit increases, and because we had more money in the bank and people felt a little more comfortable in doing it.
That's right, got it, thank you.
Yes, Mr. White.
However, that two thousand and four to two thousand and six timeframe, the city was spending money in violation of its policy. Is that not correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it wasn't just that we were being overly generous with salaries and benefits, the city was violating its own policies.
Well, it was also based on what we thought revenue increases would have been like, so you wouldn't have had, I'm just, you know, it was a very, it's an extreme statement, I think, because of the decision made at the time, based on the information we had and how we could still stay within policy. We were incorrect. So, in terms of when, where revenues were coming, went down when they should have gone up, or where they were projected to go up. So just to put in context of the decisions at the time. Obviously, we're correcting that, so...
Next, impacts of the recession. This is a slide or a chart you've seen before, but just to kind of emphasize it again, that, you know, for sales taxes over the last fourteen years since nineteen ninety-seven, we've had very, very good growth. You know, we had a little bit of blip in two thousand and two, when the events of nine eleven occurred. But beyond that, we've been growing very steadily. But you can see the impacts of the two years, two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, very dramatic, to the point where now we are back to, as of two thousand and ten, to the levels we were more, basically, ten years ago. So we've lost ten years of growth, which I think is pretty, pretty amazing.
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor. Just, I want to go to the point that was just made by the mayor. I know this is sale, the, just sales tax revenues, but if you look at the trend of the line from going all the way back to nineteen ninety-seven, all the way up to two thousand and eight, there's a, there was an anticipated growth in those revenues. And it was, I just, I just need to point that out, because I know Mr. White's point was, is one I take, I think we all have taken, and we've made these corrections, and we're really responding to, to the changes. But the, but decisions that are made in a context of an ongoing historic pattern of some ongoing growth each year are important to understand that. And of course, now we've leaned up the organization and probably will be stronger and more resilient in the future because of that. But I think that's a really important piece of the context of decisions made from two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, before the precipitous drop-off in two thousand and eight.
Madam Mayor, this is a quick observation for the private sector. This looks frighteningly exactly like my business profile.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thanks for the condolences.
And then, not as bad as sales taxes, but our bed taxes over the last fourteen years, again, really strong growth for a number of years, and then it just to the bottom fell out in two thousand and nine and ten. This is actually one of the bright stars that you'll see now, more recently, where we've seen pretty good growth in that. But you can see here, we've lost, we did lose five years of growth in just over a two-year period. So the, kind of the history of key revenues more, kind of more recently, starting in two thousand and eight, you can see specifically some key categories. This is, this isn't all the revenues, but the key revenues, taxes, fines and forfeitures, use of money on property, which is primarily interest income, intergovernmental revenues and service charges. But if you just look at the tax revenues, you can see that in two thousand and eleven, the currently adopted budget, we are five million dollars, more than five million dollars below two thousand and eight levels. And service charges, fees and service charges, there, you can see that they kind of grew in two thousand and ten, but, you know, we sort of brought them back down because of reality, so they're, they're only about a couple hundred thousand dollars more than they were two thousand and eight. Intergovernmental revenues, you can see that three point six million dollars in two thousand and eight, that's largely, the bigger number is driven by the mutual aid that we were involved with, and we generated revenues each year, about almost one point eight million dollars, I think, where it was a peak. But we've not seen those kinds of incidences, and things have changed in that whole area, so we're not going to be getting those kind of revenues. So you can see why we have a lower number in two thousand and eleven. But I think what's kind of interesting is, if we had just assumed, starting in two thousand and eight, a three percent average growth in nine, ten, and eleven, which is a very moderate growth, modest growth, because prior to that, two thousand and eight, we were in the five, six, seven percent range, we would currently be at seventy, almost seventy-two million dollars, eleven million dollars, almost twelve million dollars more than where we are today, which is a phenomenal sort of, you know, dynamic. Sales taxes for next year, what we're projecting today, are still at two thousand and one levels. So we're still, you know, we're almost getting even worse behind, so we're now more like eleven years behind the curve, if you will. Looking at the, some of the changes we had to make over the last couple of years to respond to those declining revenues, you can, this is a chart by department that shows that the adopted budgets in two thousand and nine, ten, and eleven, and what that cumulative change, primarily reductions, has been. And you can see that some of the changes have been pretty dramatic. I've highlighted some of the key, the bigger reductions. You can see the city administration slash mayor and council had a twenty, almost a twenty-one percent reduction in their budget. City attorney sixteen, community development thirteen, finance eighteen, and so forth. Parks and recreation below sixteen percent. When you look at public safety, and this is just kind of the nature of the dynamic, but you can see fire, the fire department actually stayed pretty flat, they actually went up a little bit. And while they'd made cuts, those cuts were essentially to help fund the increases that were negotiated over, over a period of time, and to salaries and benefits. The police department did go down three point one percent over that period of time. But when you look at sort of the overall, you know, with, you see those big percentages, double-digit declines in all the departments, or number of the departments, in total, that's just seven, six point six percent reduction, primarily because it's the, those big, I'm sorry, the departments were the biggest cuts for the smaller departments. And this is kind of, just to kind of show this graphically, you can see that, so starting in two thousand and nine and ten, we, over that period of time, we've had eight point two million dollars reductions in the budget. And so this is this slide here, the reduction, and just as a reference point from two thousand and nine. But the thing that people forget is that if we don't make those adjustments, the expenditures just grow forward, and they are going to grow forward, just without our control, whether they're negotiated salary and benefit increases, or just purse costs, or health insurance costs, that was the trend line. So while the budgets went down eight point two million dollars, we actually had to make over a two-year period about fourteen million dollars in cuts. That were the actual cuts we made, whether it be staffing, or even in some cases, some revenue enhancements, primarily cuts, not eight point two, but fourteen point three. So that's an important distinction to understand and note. Looking at position changes, same thing, you can see there were a lot of percentages up there. Twenty-five percent in administrative services, library eighteen percent, and so forth. So in total, eight point seven percent. Important to note that particularly in parks and recreation, and this is the case in a lot of other departments, this does not include reductions in the hourly workforce, estimated at twenty-six point five full-time equivalents. Hourly employees, and these are folks that, a lot of them are seasonal, but a lot of them, you know, working on a regular basis, so it's a big loss. Now, community development is somewhere in the order of seven, ten, or eleven positions, hourly positions, full-time equivalents, that were eliminated during that same period. So again, these are just regular employees, not hourly employees, and we have had some reductions in that area. We also had some reductions in internal service funds, which affect, you know, that's part of the, the sharing of the, of the reductions, if you will, because they do provide services and charge the general fund for things such as motor pool, building maintenance, information systems, services, and so forth. And over a period of two years, we've seen a eight percent reduction, or six positions in those funds. This is a chart showing, starting in really two thousand and seven, what the, what the positions were citywide. The, the yellow portion of that represents the general fund, it does have the most employees, about sixty percent. And then the red line represents all the other funds. So it's the internal service funds, the enterprise funds, special revenue funds, and so forth. And you can see that we have reduced citywide positions, but in the general fund particularly, we went in two thousand and nine, where we had our peak of six sixty-three, down to six hundred and six in two thousand and eleven. Excuse me. But in citywide, we are back down to where we were back in nineteen ninety-nine. So that, I think it's an important, and I don't have the details of the mix between general fund and, and enterprise funds and the like in nineteen ninety-nine, but I suspect the proportions were pretty similar.
Madam Mayor, Bob, does this include the hourly's, or this is, this is soured?
This does not include hourly employees, so that's another, again, that kind of why I brought it up earlier. So the workforce reduction was actually greater than what's reflected in this chart. That's a good point, thank you. So, impacts on city services, you know, we talked about the budget reductions, we talked about positions, but, you know, it's also kind of important to note, well, what does that mean to our citizens, whether they're our customers, whether they be internal customers or external customers? I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, there are just highlights, there's a lot more impacts that occurred over the last couple of years, but some of the, but some of, these are some of the key highlights, or key service reductions. In the recreation program or division, they've eliminated escape park monitoring, the senior tour program, lower west side community center recreation guide. They've transferred some responsibilities to the teen center, as you know, the junior high after-school program, PAL, Los Vasitas tennis, tennis, Toedings Park, reduced hours at Los Spanos Pool in Ortega Park waiting pools. The Cabrillo bathhouse public reception counters' hours are also reduced there. In library, we have closed on Mondays, and that's the Central East Side Library Branch. We've due services to teens, the outreach that we've done to promote youth literacy, some memberships in youth-related organizations, and participation in community-wide coalitions. And also, just, I guess, more notable or obvious are the longer waits at the public service counters. In parks, we have eliminated or suspended the IPM, the Integrated Pest Management Green Team, and the Park Turf Rehab Project. We've reduced park maintenance at all park facilities, which have been, again, they've been, the standards have been lowered. The IPM program is down seventy-five percent, the park tree maintenance is down forty percent, vegetative fuels, defensible space program, down fifty percent, mowing frequency, down fifty percent, the Cabrillo landscaping, fifty percent reduction, and then the beach maintenance has also been reduced. Some new unfunded responsibilities include the Cabrillo landscaping, Bonnet Park expansion, and the shoreline, shoreline park extension. In fire?
Can I, that, you go back, yeah. What about the unf, can you explain a little bit about the unfunded responsibilities?
Sure. And I'm going to have Nancy Rep, our Parks and Recreation Director, come to speak to that, if she's here, she could speak more to that.
I can explain it briefly. Basically, these are new landscaping responsibilities that have been added to the parks' folks without any additional funding. So we put all that landscaping on Cabrillo as a part of the improvements, but we didn't add anything to their budget, they just have to accept that. We expanded Bonnet Park, we did the shoreline park extension.
I can picture the, the second two, but the first one, the Cabrillo landscaping...
That's on the sidewalk improvements from Stern's Wharf to the Cabrillo Arts Center, where, if you recall, it was all just bare dirt. And then we added landscaping all along there when we did the sidewalk improvements.
I see, okay, thank you.
In the fire department, we've extended the service life of some frontline trucks, it just means that, you know, they're being replaced at a longer period, period of time. We postponed some building improvements at Fire Station Seven, reduced equipment purchases for, for personal protective gear. And some of these don't have a direct impact to the, to, you know, to our, to the customers, if you will, but ultimately, they do, could have an impact. There was a fire inspector position that was held vacant, or is held vacant, it's reduced the commercial and high-fire hazard safety inspections. And then they've reduced some non-mandated training and city-paid tuition reimbursements for firefighters. In police, we've had primarily reduction of specialty positions, and, for example, the B coordinators, which is for the, involved in the community policing, the DARE program, PAL, and the school resources officer. And we'll be talking more about this later, when we get into some discussion of the police staffing, and Deputy Chief Frank Mannix will be getting into that. Sure.
We've reduced PAL, but then they are taking on some other responsibilities? Is that what you're going to be discussing?
Yes.
Later about, thank you.
In the city attorney, they've, because of reduced staffing, they've reduced code enforcement efforts by about fifty percent. And they've also been, had to reduce support to the Public Works Department for new initiatives and projects by about twenty-five percent. In the city clerk's office, they've eliminated a deputy city clerk position, when the impacts are that there are delays in compiling and posting city council agendas. The time it takes to complete the minutes is now seven to ten days instead of five. They, as you may know, they process a lot of contracts that are approved by council, and it's now taking fourteen to thirty days to process those versus seven days. They also reduced a records technician from full-time to part-time, and the impact has been the intermittent closure of that office during the day, sometimes there's nobody there. Phone calls, which typically had been answered by a live body, are now answered by, or handled by an automated system and referred accordingly. And there is no person from many of the front desks for greeting and answering questions, existing staff who are more in the back office, they will have to come and handle those responsibilities. But, so the level of service essentially to our customers, of just the public, has gone down in that area. Human resources, we've eliminated an HR human resources assistant position, which means that that work has been absorbed by other HR analysts. And the impacts have been primarily to departments whom they serve, availability and response times, recruitments, on issues of recruitment advice, and just general direction related to human resources. They're not doing any more outside professional training because of lack of funding. And as you may recall, we have eliminated the city leadership academy, and the educational reimbursement programs, and most of the LEAP program. And, you know, as you know, it's important to invest in our employees and keep them trained. We haven't been doing a lot of that as we've done in the past. And it's always better, in my opinion, to promote from within and prepare those folks for leadership positions within the city. They have so much knowledge and time invested in them, so it's kind of a good way to promote that. In finance, we did eliminate a senior account position, and I know, you know, it's sort of back office work, but it does have impacts, not only to how we provide services to our customers or other departments, and providing them financial information or support, but it does have a direct impact in our ability to do things such as prepare the CAFR every year, our financial statements, which is a very seasonal effort, and so the lack of staff there has an impact. We've actually reduced our revenue audit program substantially, and we still do what I think is really important, we have our contract with MBIA for sales tax auditing, so they keep an eye on, make sure we're getting the right amounts. But things such as auditing our hotels, whether we do two or three a year like we used to, and those things really help and just provide a deterrence, and we're not, we're not doing that anymore. We don't have a lot of staff to help with, you know, this whole vacation rental thing, and, you know, we think that there's some potential for us to generate some revenue, but we don't have the staff to really keep bird, bird dogging that effort, monitoring for new vacation rentals that come online and so forth. And then we've also eliminated the assistant finance director position, and it just means, while that was, I think, the right move, it has impacted other managers, because that work has been absorbed by them, and then it just trickles down, so it just adds to the overall workload. Information systems, which is an internal service fund, they eliminated one full-time equivalent in the help desk, so that means more senior staff are absorbing that work. And there's just been a general reduction in ability to provide technical support when people call up to the various departments when it comes to PCs. We've reduced the web support for departments due to the elimination of a half-time hourly employee. And they've also eliminated an infrastructure supervisor position, which, again, just less staff resources for new projects and staff supervision. And as we'll kind of mention later on, one of those projects we hope to kind of endeavor and get started on is the FMS replacement project, and this is where a position like this would really help. In planning, they've eliminated, as kind of alluded to before, some hourly positions, six full-time and one part-time hourly positions. They've eliminated the sign committee, and transferred those responsibilities to the ABR and HLC as appropriate. They've reduced the bid process, or it's been, there's been a reduction in the bid process, design, review, special studies, there's been longer waits for preliminary plant check reviews, decrease in efficiency in zoning enforcement, and less staff to support long-range planning efforts, such as planning Santa Barbara and the housing element. In building and safety, they've also lost some hourly employees, five full-time and one part-time. They decreased staff support to the neighborhood improvement task force, and just the general reduction in the timely project reviews because of the staffing reductions. In public works, we have eliminated the graffiti removal program, where we're, we're a lot more active with that, that's still being done, but it's more of a code enforcement approach, where it's done on private properties, we require them to take care of that. And then lastly, I see a question coming up.
Hi, Bob.
Sure.
Does the graffiti hotline no longer function then?
Actually, I'm not sure of that.
I mean, it's, it's, it's working, but I just wonder if maybe nobody's...
The portion that we have reduced or eliminated is, we're still doing it within the public right-of-way, because it's funded through the Streets program, but we also had a general fund part of that, where we went out and dealt with property owners, and we're doing very, very little of that anymore, because that, we just couldn't afford it out of the general fund. So there's still a graffiti hotline, and if it's within the public right-of-way, they still, they still clean it up.
Right, and if there's something reported that's like on somebody, on their property, do we send them a letter, or?
This, that's what we're doing very little of now because of this, because that was funded out of the general fund. We couldn't charge that to the Streets Fund because it's not on the public right-of-way.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I'll look for the future. I think this is kind of what people are looking, have been looking for, what the numbers look like. I want to start, before we actually get into the actual numbers, just some general assumptions. I think, as Jim indicated at the very beginning, that we believe that the worst is behind us. We're kind of, we've hit the bottom, we're on our way up. It's just how quickly will that recovery be? How steep will that recovery curve be? Generally speaking, I think most economists are predicting a slow economic recovery. It's hard to say what that means in Santa Barbara because these are more national sort of projections. But the one thing that is for sure and clear is that unemployment nationally, statewide, and even here in Santa Barbara, is still very high. I was reading that the fourth quarter GDP came in at what was considered to be pretty good, three point two percent under normal conditions. That's actually good. But in order for that to have an impact on unemployment, it's got to be a lot better than that. It's got to be more in the five or six percent range to a sustained level in order to have an impact on unemployment. Right now, we're just keeping up with the growth in the population of workers. That's all. We're just creating new jobs for those new folks coming into the workforce. Seventy percent of the economy is driven by consumer spending, so where people are unemployed, it's hard to spend money. And as you know, here in Santa Barbara, our key revenues are driven by or tied to consumer spending, whether at the hotels or restaurants or the shops. And so, again, it's sort of part of the whole projection that it's going to be a slow recovery until the unemployment numbers get better. For this year, we do expect to have our revenues do better than what we budgeted. As you know, we've done well in our bed tax for the first half of the year. We're about, almost about nine percent through December. So, it is looking good, but I think you have to remember that we're building off a really bad year last year, actually, two years. So, well, it's kind of easy to do well when you're going against a bad year. In the future, we're sort of projecting that those numbers will be a little more moderated. We're not going to probably see ten percent growth in bed tax in the next few years. This year, we might, but again, because we're building off a bad year. So, you can see the assumptions that are built into our multi-year forecasting, the key revenue, sales taxes, bed tax, property taxes, and utility users' tax. This year, we are projecting that we're going to end the year at two and a half percent above last year. That's based on one quarter's data, as Mr. Armstrong indicated, and that came in at four percent. And part of that, at least, was because of adjustments to catch up from the stakes in the prior quarters. So, the economic growth was much less than four percent. But we are thinking that things are turning around, and we might achieve two and a half percent. Bed tax, we're thinking we'll end the year at six point two percent above last year. Again, we are at nine percent year-to-date. But the second half of the year, we're going to start to be building on, on months last year where there was actual growth versus decline. So, as I said, you know, when we have decline of ten percent in a, in a December or November, kind of easy to show growth, but these later months will be, will be seeing some growth from prior quarters or prior years. So, the growth will probably be more moderated. And property taxes, based on what we know today and what the county provides us, we think we're going to be about one percent under last year because there's still those declines in values, and the real estate market is still hurting. And then utility users' tax, hard to say. You know, we're just projecting right now a point four percent because so far, we're flat this year.
Madam Mayor. How does, are we basically keeping up with inflation here?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, inflation is somewhere in the order of two percent right now. So, I would say it's, we're probably keeping up with inflation, but just, just barely in, particularly with sales taxes, with bed tax, we're doing better than that, obviously. We're at six point two percent.
Okay, thank you.
So, looking out to the years, you can see sales taxes, we're just assuming we're going to be, you know, steady growth, but nothing dramatic, not in the six or seven percent range, three percent next year, four percent in the two out-years. Bed taxes, as I said, we're looking to that be more moderated because we're building off a, probably a pretty good year this year. So, four percent next year, and then maybe five in five out-years. And these are all just assumptions and projections. There's no way to know. We could have, you know, ten percent growth, for all we know. We could also have zero percent growth. We just, when you get, you know, to 2014, you know, it's hard to really hit it exactly. Property taxes, we do expect some growth over the next few years, so one and a half next year, but hopefully, two percent and then three percent in the out-years. Utility users' tax, this is just sort of a, I'd say, estimate, three percent over the next three years. We really don't know.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On property taxes, do we have a, I'm recalling seeing at the county, and so I expect there's something available for the city, too, that shows the differential between the true assessed value and the Prop 13 assessed value? Do you, is that figure available to you? Do you follow that at all? So, that there's sort of a lag time there? It's that reservoir of potential value that we can look forward to as properties sell?
Yeah, we don't get a lot of data from the county in that regard, and so it's hard for us to track that. We know that there's some potential there for some capacity, if you will. It's just going to depend upon a lot of things getting fleshed out and a lot of, you know, some still foreclosures and those kind of things. I personally think that the real estate market is going to take five years to really start seeing some real good recoveries. So, while they can adjust the assessed values by CPI or every year, those CPIs have not been real great, so, but they can do up to a maximum, as you know, of two percent per year. The CPI is just...
Right. Well, what I was referring to was more the reservoir of properties that have been held for twenty, thirty years that get sold from death and people moving out and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah. Again, we don't have a sense of how much they did, what the magnitude is.
Okay. Thank you.
The only data I've seen is on when property is transferred, but the county doesn't go back and say, well, here's what the real market value of it is compared to what it's assessed. They don't do any of that kind of analysis. It's more just the, you know, how often the property's transferred.
The property taxes, does that include only what the city gets, not counting what the redevelopment agency gets?
That is correct. That this is just the city's portion of the property taxes. That's that twelve percent number that we were talking about in that one slice, you know, after what goes to the schools and the counties. This is the portion that the, that the city gets.
Can you get me the portion, kind of on a historical data about what the RDA has received from these funds?
Sure. Absolutely.
And then I was wondering, since Medicare recipients have received no increase in their benefits based on zero inflation for these last two years, they're obviously using a different indicator than what we use. Can you explain that difference?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember Self, I'm not exactly sure what indicator Medicare uses for purposes of adjusting those benefits. What the county uses is a, the CPI that's tied more regionally, more locally, and it's, and they use it for the year ended October of each year. So, sometimes a particular year, depending on what month you're using, what could be slightly different. But, so, they use, for example, for this upcoming levy, the October 2010 CPI.
So, this is more localized where the federal might be lumping everybody in?
More national, sure.
Because when I get calls from Medicare recipients, they say, who says there's no inflation? Thank you.
Sure. On the expenditure side, you could see, important to note what's kind of built into the assumptions. We do have some labor concessions, as you know, with police and fire. We actually have a three-year agreement, so those concessions run through fiscal year 2013. This year, those concessions amounted to about six percent. For next year, they're between three and four percent. And then in 2013, those concessions actually go down to zero on a net basis. So, that's an important thing to note. And those concessions include unpaid furloughs, as they do for most folks, the suspension of vacation cash-outs. They do have, have started making contributions to those PERS costs. And there are some salary and benefit increases that are included with that, the net of which is still, you know, some savings. And we'll talk about that more. But those, all those concessions are three years, expire in three years, including the contribution to PERS. Except for the salary and benefit increases, those are ongoing, and you'll see how that impacts our multi-year forecast. Other labor concessions for SEIU, we do have a one-year agreement with them that expires at the end of this fiscal year. It's about six percent. One of the conditions that they asked for and got were no layoffs, but also includes unpaid furlough and suspension of vacation cash-out. For supervisors, essentially the same. And actually, where it says no layoffs, that's not correct. It's just six percent. I just copied the one from above. But they're, they also have unpaid furlough and a reduction, not a complete elimination, but a reduction of vacation cash-out. For confidential, again, a one-year agreement, six percent, and again, I shouldn't say no layoffs. Unpaid furlough and suspension of vacation cash-out. For non-safety...
I don't recall what confidential.
We have a few folks that, like executive assistants, that are considered confidential employees. If not a lot, just a handful, really. And they are tied to SEIU, but they're not part of SEIU officially. They're a separate group. Non-safety managers, so everybody but public safety, one-year agreement, although this is more of a tell than a negotiated amount, somewhere in the order of eight and a half percent, same concessions. And then for safety managers, another one-year agreement in the range of seven to eight percent, and again, the same concessions. The assumptions that we've built into the multi-year forecast for PERS costs, this is just the city's portion of the contribution rates. As you know, some employees, miscellaneous employees are paying a portion of their PERS, and so are fire and police now. So, this is just the city's portion. It goes this year with the rates are, and these are actual rates this year that are shown, as well as for next year, we've gotten from PERS, those actual rates. And then the two years beyond that are what PERS has projected and provided to us, and they've done a lot more, a lot better in that because they're trying to prepare a lot of agencies for the impacts of the 2009 losses, so that they've been working hard to provide us those kinds of projections. In the past, they've only gone out one year. But you can see, you know, starting with police, for example, thirty-five point nine percent this year. It will go up about seven percent, six or seven percent in just one year, up to forty-five percent. And that's still, remember, that's still including the portion or factors in what they're paying toward their share. But in 2014, you can see it, it really jumps up dramatically from forty-five to fifty-three. And that's the same really for fire, and that's because, as I mentioned, those concessions that are in place expire in 2013. So, in 2014, the city will be basically, you know, unless we negotiate something different at that point, are going to be picking up the, that share that is currently being paid for by fire and police. The cumulative rate increase, just in terms of percentage points, from thirty-five to fifty-three for police, seventeen point seven percent. But the effective increase is almost fifty percent. So, it's almost a fifty percent increase going from thirty-five to fifty-three percent over a three-year period. And the same story with fire, from thirty-five point seven to fifty, almost fifty-three percent for the same reasons. And then miscellaneous, theirs are going up a little more moderately. The cumulative rate increase is four point one, and effective increase is about twenty percent.
Madam Mayor, could you explain the cumulative versus overall effective, please?
So, let's, let's look at miscellaneous. If you take the 2014 rate of twenty-four point two-nine, subtract that, out of that, the twenty point one-five up above in 2011, see those two numbers? Twenty-four in 2014 versus twenty in 2011? That difference is four point one percent, right? But four divided by, that four point one divided by twenty up above represents a twenty percent increase. So, the rate going from twenty to twenty-four percent is a twenty percent effective increase in the overall rate, or one-fifth, almost one-fifth.
Or another way to look at it is, the amount of money we will have to send to PERS in 2014 for the miscellaneous employees will be twenty percent more than it is now. And for police and fire, you can see it's close to fifty percent.
And this because we have a defined contribute, or benefit, and the PERS investment had problems on the open market, correct?
That's correct. This is really the impacts, twelve through fourteen are the impacts of the losses that PERS experienced in 2009, that one year.
Repeat that, please.
Sure. The reason we're seeing such dramatic increases in the rates between, in 2012, thirteen and fourteen, is because in 2009, when PERS had those significant investment losses, somewhere in the order of thirty to forty percent, they have to make up for that. And typically, they would make it up all in two years later, or a lot of that, or even spread, I'm sorry, a lot of times, they'll spread those losses over a longer period of time. But because they're so dramatic, they're spreading them over a three-year period.
Right.
And so, we're, and we knew that when we, they told us that last year, that we're going to see big increases over a three-year period to spread those big losses that they couldn't really spread or push out into the future.
Yeah, that's a difficult thing for, I think, the public to understand, this gets, and I think we'll have to explain it over and over and over again. Thank you.
Mr. Smarrio, is that, so, absent some increase in revenue, are we looking then at personal reductions to cover this?
I'm sorry, ask your question again.
Absent some big increase in revenue and unforeseen, I mean, do we match this just with personal reduction? Is that the only way?
Sure. And we'll, you'll see how that kind of the dynamics play out when we look at the whole, the revenues and expenditures together. But, so, this is just a chart that reflects that, and you can see kind of just pictorially how those rates look. The blue charts is the finance, I'm sorry, the fire department, the red is police, and then the yellow is everybody else, and then in the light blue is what the total is. But you can see in 2012, thirteen and fourteen, the tallest of those two bars, that's the total. You can see how dramatic those increases are, starting in 2012, and then even more dramatic in 2014 because, again, that's when the concessions expire, and the city would have to pick up those portions that are currently being paid for by fire and police.
Well, and to be clear, so, in fire, we're talking about a department of about a hundred and ten employees, and police, a department of about two hundred and twenty-five employees, and all others is on the range of seven hundred employees.
About four hundred.
Four hundred.
Yes.
Four hundred employees.
On the general...
Six hundred? Where are we?
For the general, this is just general fund.
Non-public safety, general fund.
Yeah.
About four hundred? So, a hundred and twenty, two hundred and forty, and four hundred. Okay.
And then, so, just some final expenditure assumptions. We've assumed that, other than salary and benefit costs, everything else will be flat. So, supplies and services and the charges from the internal service funds for building, maintenance, and information systems, that those would be flat. Not sure that's a realistic assumption, but for now, just for purposes of this analysis, we've assumed that those are going to be the same effectively for the next several years. We did include and build into the multi-year forecast additional monies for capital. Traditionally, we've funded seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This year, as I mentioned, it was only a half million dollars, but we put in a million dollars because we just need to start putting money into some, some important projects. All right. So, this is the multi-year forecast, and I want to just highlight that this is very preliminary because the numbers are fluid. We're going to get some data, as Mr. Armstrong indicated, in March for sales taxes that could impact these numbers. But for now, this is where we're thinking the numbers are going to be over the next several years. And just to kind of cut to the chase, the very bottom, you'll see that this year, the very first column of numbers, that we are expecting a surplus of seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Good news. Again, primarily because what we budgeted in tax areas are doing better than we thought. But next year, we're projecting a deficit of about two point nine million dollars, which actually gets better in 2013, but then ramps back up in 2014. Again, primarily because of what I mentioned, in the labor costs, those concessions are no longer there that we're getting from fire and police. They go back up. So, we look at just the total revenues. You can see that we are projecting a fairly decent growth, a hundred million, forty-five in the current year, all the way up to a hundred and seven million dollars in 2014. That's about a two point two percent growth rate, and it's primarily because, and if it seems low, it's because it is. We've not made any assumptions about departmental revenues, so the fees that they charge and some of the other revenues that the general fund that we talked about, we've assumed those to be flat for this, in this forecast period. All we've made assumptions about are what our taxes are going to do. So, taxes at sixty-one point seven this year, they're expected to grow about six million dollars over the next three years, and that, that portion is about a three percent increase on average. Just to kind of give you a sort of a sensitivity to this, if we were to grow...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Sure.
I think when the public hears taxes and sees increases, they get frightened, so let's be clear, we're not talking about tax rates here.
We're not talking about increasing tax rates, just the ebbs and flows of the economy, and we're hoping the economy recovers, and so our related tax revenues would go up.
Yeah, great, thanks.
So, if we were just to assume, instead of a two point two percent growth rate, but that overall tax, I'm sorry, overall revenues were to grow three point five percent, in that overall tax, I'm sorry, overall revenues were to grow three-point-five percent in reality, if they did grow three-and-a-half percent, percent on average over the next three years, we would cure our structural deficit without doing anything else, everything else being equal. You can see salary and benefits in just three years, from current year seventy-six point four million dollars to 2014, that they're going up by ten million dollars. That's an average growth of four-point-four percent. So you can see why we have a structural problem. And again, that's assuming no pay raises, that's assuming just primarily PERS costs going up and whatever concessions that we have in place this year are going to go away next year. But, so this is sort of status quo. Nothing else going up, all the other costs are fairly flat. And so you can see that the problem is that our costs are going up, even, even while we're holding them down, if you will, because of the things of health insurance, but primarily because of PERS costs.
When, when you say pay raises, is that exclusive of CPI adjustments?
Yeah, we don't have any CPI adjustments currently built into any, again, we have concessions now this year for most of our labor groups, but no increases anywhere. So really, that, that really speaks to our structural problem. As I mentioned, capital, this, we are assuming a million dollars per year. So kind of to speak to our balance strategy for this next coming year, the more immediate terms, we're going to try to avoid layoffs if possible. We're going to try to minimize any more reductions to service levels because we've, as you've seen, we've already done, in some cases, destimated our programs, our departments. We do expect to eliminate some vacant positions this year in connection with reorganization. So it's, it was actually, it's a good move, you know, become more efficient. And then we are expecting to achieve some concessions from non-state labor groups to help close the budget gap. On a long-term basis, as you saw, that even if we're, even if all things being equal and our costs are sort of flat except for what we can control, PERS and like, you know, we still got a problem. So it's important for us to continue to keep those costs down. And from just my opinion, I don't think we're in an add-back mode. We're still got a few years before we can get to that point. We're going to have to continue with those labor concessions because in large measure, they're one-time. So next year, we'll be looking for one-time labor concessions, but the following year, those are gone again. So we're probably going to have to continue with those for a number, for a couple more years at least, but hopefully at a diminishing rate. And then the goal is to allow our revenues to grow back, grow us back into balance. And we're hoping that they grow better than we think they are. We've assumed two-point-two percent overall in our revenues. If they get to three percent, we're doing really well. Four percent, then we're in really good shape. But again, we are going to need concessions through 2014, including Public Safety, when those agreements expire.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, perhaps you could explain there, as I recall, there's, there's a fairly locked-in agreement for the year eleven, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. But two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, there is a, a vaguer agreement in place with, with the, at least Police and Fire. Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure.
And then see how your, how you picture managing that or strategy, strategizing that a little bit?
Sure. Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, so just to kind of refresh your memories, for all labor groups other than Police and Fire, we have current year concessions totaling, I think, about two million dollars roughly. Those concessions are expiring this year. So we will need to negotiate with all those labor groups once again for next to get concessions to help close the gap for 2012. They'll likely be, although they could be longer term, but they'll likely be, at least in many cases, one-year agreements again. So we're dealing with one-time sort of solutions until those revenues start to grow and catch up. For Police and Fire, those, that, those concessions are not one-year in length, they're three years in length, but that are diminishing rates. So six percent this year roughly, roughly three to four percent next year. And then in 2013, they're actually just flat. It just means there's no increases and that's what we've agreed to. 2014, all that goes away. So those, those are essentially one-time concessions, if you will, over a three-year period. The problem is with Public Safety, some of those concessions were, were ongoing, the increases, if you will, were ongoing, whereas the decreases were one-time over at least a three-year period. So that's why 2014 is a bigger, for me, a bigger challenge because we're going to have to be dealing with the, the elimination of those concessions. We're still going to be trying to manage the concessions with other, other labor groups, all the while hoping that revenues get us to a balanced budget. So it's just sort of managing those concessions in a way that, that allows us to buy time, if you will. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Well, I'm sure everybody breathes a sigh of relief when they see there are no layoffs and, and eliminating vacant positions, I think, is good because these are positions we have budgeted for but will not spend. And some departments, I think, I'm sure Mr. Armstrong is considering this, but then if we lose someone to maybe divide up the duties, I heard you talk about that. And something that, I don't know if any consideration has been thought about privatizing certain things. We can't privatize our police or certain other things, but I was reading that many cities are starting to privatize IT work and other such things because you only pay for it when you need it. It's not an ongoing expense. And again, with the no layoffs, but by attrition, if you lose somebody who's, say, doing park maintenance. And, and the third part I wanted to bring up is that I've done a little research and I think that it would behoove us to make sure that the positions that we're hiring are competitive with the private sector. Because my looking into this is that we're not. We're paying more and then when you add the benefit package on top of that, it's, we, we're pretty generous here. And since we're asking everybody to cut back and pare lean, that maybe we ought to evaluate our wage structure for new hires, at least, that it be more in line with what our residents are being paid.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Selv, I'll try to respond at least to some of that. I think it's important to note that wages and benefits are set by contract and that are negotiated. And essentially, council makes those decisions ultimately as to how much we pay our employees. So even with new employees that come on board, if they are part of a particular union or labor group, then they're going to be paid at that existing, the rate that's been provided for in that union's classifications, if you will. So that's something you can control, the council can control, about how much we pay our employees. It's interesting about the, you know, the competitive sting, you know, I think there are, there have been some studies about how much, you know, public employees are paid relative to the private sector. And you can argue both ways. And I think it's true that in some cases, we may be over the private sector, but in some cases, we may not. And I know a recent study showed that on overall, that public employees at a local level are paid below, including benefits and all those things, below the private sector. But that's just one study. So I don't know what the real answer is, but I think you could argue either way.
I'd like to talk to the person who did that study. My study is not showing that. But again, you know, can we privatize some of these?
Sure, the last part.
We contract for a lot of services in this city.
I think that we probably, people don't realize that we, we do do a lot of privatizing. A lot of things that the city does that we do by contract.
Right.
And it's helpful to have those kinds, that kind of flexibility.
Right.
You know, in community development, for example, we do a lot of, we hire a lot of professionals to help us with the ebbs and flows of workflow and workload. So I think we do a fair amount citywide of privatizing. You know, I can't speak to any other area you might be thinking about, but I think we really consider those things and perhaps there's opportunities elsewhere, but I think we're always going to look into those things. But there's some benefits to sometimes having staff on, you know, in-house, the flexibility that provides, the control over the quality of the work and those kind of things. So there's, you know, I think it's appropriate at times and sometimes it's not always appropriate.
Oh, I would agree with that. I just hope we will sort of.
Always, I think we do.
Get a sharper pencil out. Thank you.
Sure. So this is kind of the theoretical scenario that I, I'm kind of thinking might, might occur, at least. The yellow line represents our revenues. You can see in 2008, when we started seeing declines, the red line represents our costs. And you can see they didn't unfortunately match our revenue declines because there, while we have concessions and we reduce staffing, some of the costs, we just don't have control over. Again, PERS costs are going to go up no matter what we do, so will our health insurance costs, so some things we can't control. So we'll still see an increase, even though we're holding costs down, if you will, there's still going to be some increases to those. And so the goal is to have those costs, the pace of that growth be less than what the revenues are doing. So hopefully, we'll see those two lines cross, whether it's 2014 or 15, nobody knows. It's all going to be dependent upon, in my opinion, how well the economy recovers and how well our local revenues grow over the next few years. Some other things to consider, potential state impacts, as you know, the, the state is facing a twenty-five billion dollar, I think, plus deficit through, actually, the end of next year. The governor has proposed, as I kind of alluded to before, extending some temporary tax increases that are put in place and extending those for five more years. One of those is the sales tax one percent that's scheduled to expire. Some income taxes there were scheduled also expire, and then the car tax, the vehicle license fee. And he is hoping if we get, that if he gets those extensions, that that will help secure the fundings toward, toward schools, K through twelve education. And of course, the big debate is, or discussion has been around the redevelopment agencies, his proposal to eliminate RDAs entirely. And not really, there's some who think they can't legally do that, but that would obviously have an impact on the city. The cut in state library funding, we get money not only in the general funds, library programs, but also in the county libraries that we manage. The general funds portion of that loss could be in the order of a hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars. And although it's not part of the state's impact or state's budget proposal, the county, as you know, provides funding to the, to the city for the county libraries and, and they're looking at making reductions, and the city library, I'm sorry. The cops funding is, they haven't really talked about that. We get about a hundred thousand dollars a year for, for our police department. It's just, we think it's potentially going to be cut. And then there is going to be a big shift, at least its proposal is a shift, a lot of responsibilities of the county. And so while it's not going to directly impact us, it could indirectly impact us. And then to the extent they make cuts, do make cuts to community colleges and the K through twelve education or schools, because of the agreements we have for them, with them, and funding different activities and services, that could have an impact on us.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you enumerate the shift of responsibilities to counties and cities? Do you have any specific ideas on that or what that might be?
Yeah, and I know Mr. Armstrong could probably speak more about this, but I know, for example, that one of the proposals is to take some of the prisoners that are currently in state prisons and tell, and send them down to the counties so that the counties are, are housing those folks now. They're probably going to be making a lot of cuts into health and human, and welfare programs. And those are the things that, of course, that address those that are in need or underprivileged and, and they still need those services. And to the extent that the county's funding goes away, then some of those responsibilities may shift to us. I don't know if you have other specific examples?
The, the governor's proposal so far, pretty vague. The one that Bob mentioned about the shifting what they call low-risk offenders to county jails, I think should be a very serious concern. Right now, the latest I heard from Sheriff Brown is eighty percent of the people in county jail right now are there on remand, waiting to go to trial. So they're not even there for punishment, they're just waiting for trial. So there's only twenty percent of the capacity right now is for people who have been sentenced to county jail. And that's, that's one of the problems we have with the people we're citing for municipal code violations and things like that, is there's no room for them in the jail right now. If you then shift another two or three hundred prisoners to our county jail, that, because they don't have room at the state prisons, you've pretty much used up all the capacity and then some. And then, as, as Bob said, there's two issues. One, they're cutting health services, alcohol, mental health, drug services. They're cutting the funding to counties for that, but they also then are saying they're, they're over time going to shift that responsibility to counties, supposedly with, with funding. And because we interact with a lot of those folks who receive those services from the county, if those services are reduced significantly, I think that will affect some, especially in the public safety area, a lot of the folks we deal with. But it's still very, very much up in the air. When I looked at the governor's budget, I think most of that is going to happen over two or three years. He's throwing out right now is a part of his budget proposal. So I think right now, we're more concerned just about the funding cuts that all the agencies are going to receive.
Okay, so just real quick, some next steps, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Armstrong. Key milestones in the budget process, as Mr. Armstrong indicated earlier, we are right in the middle of it. Departments are currently developing their budgets. They will be submitting those budgets for review with, with the city administrator's office and also with finance. Those are, those review meetings are scheduled for February and March. We'll do final balancing in late March. At that point, we'll know more, of course, bed tax information and also sales tax for that quarter. And then in April, late, late April, we'll be filing the recommended budget. And then at that point, it really kicks off the public review process where council and the public has, will have a chance to review it. And we'll have meetings where the departments will present their respective budgets between April and June. And our goal, as always, is to adopt in late June. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Armstrong.
You know, what I've tried to do in this next section is identify what, what I think are our priorities for fiscal year 2012. And this is where, at some point, we need the input from the council. And because of the difficult financial situation, it's not like we have lots of areas to expand and grow services. But I think I've tried to identify, and again, I appreciate your, you know, feedback at the end. First and foremost, I think, is we've got to maintain our fiscal strength. You know, we are trying to avoid the, any additional use of reserves. We think the reserves we have are appropriate, but trying to use another, for example, two or three million dollars of reserves just to balance the budget, we don't think that would make any sense. As Bob said, at this point, we're being conservative on review, revenue estimates. You know, budgeting revenues at seven or eight percent in order to balance the budget doesn't make any sense and it's really funny money. And, you know, a lot of government agencies have gotten themselves in trouble by basically plugging the hole with unrealistic revenue estimates. As Councilmember Self, I think, you know, referred to this, we are looking for ways to streamline operations. One of the positive aspects of going through a budget crisis like we've been going through is it does force you to look at how many people does it take to get certain tasks done? And are there other ways to do things? And I think in many cases, we found that departments and, and people have risen up to the occasion, they've taken advantage of technology. As you just go around City Hall and you look at the number of empty desks that there are now compared to a few years ago, you know, that's happening. And a lot of it just happens because people are working harder, they're working smarter, they're using technology. And that's going on throughout the organization. And when you see the, the cuts that you saw in all of the departments, I don't think we've cut services that much. In many cases, folks are just doing a better job. We are looking at privatization, it's a delicate balance. We also have some labor, there's some conditions in our labor agreements that we just can't contract things out without meeting and confering with the labor organizations. But I can tell you then, in several parts of the organization where we used to, you know, do most of the work in-house, tree trimming is a good example. You know, most of our tree trimming, a lot of it now is contracted out on our custodial mix, a lot more of that's done by the private sector. It's especially beneficial, I think, where there is a huge wage differential between what we pay our folks and the private sector pays. When you get into the professional areas and some of the technical areas, my experience has been it's much more difficult to achieve those savings. When we, when we contract with outside engineering firms, for example, there's not a lot of savings there. In some cases, we pay more. What we use them, the best area to use them for is ups and downs in the workload, so that you, you staff for the, for the valley and then you use the private sector for the peaks, rather than staff for the peaks. But that's an area we're going to continue to look at. Reviewing fees and charges to determine where subsidies exist. I know nobody likes us to raise our fees, but the fact of the matter is, there are still many parts of city government where tax money are, is being used to subsidize services that we provide to certain, you know, parts of the community. In community development, for example, there's a huge tax subsidy there for developers, where we're subsidizing private development. And we need to look at those. At some point, it's a council policy, but I've asked the departments to continue to look in that area. And as you saw, fees and charges are not a big part of the general fund, it's about ten percent, but there may be some upside there. Last couple of years, they've been pretty well flat. Next area, and I, and we can't minimize this, we still need to reach agreements with, with our employee organizations to get some concessions. Of that three-million-dollar gap, part of that is, is at this point, we do not have an agreement with SEIU, with our supervisors, with managers, you know, it's more of a tell, but we, we, we have to do something there. And so we've got to work with those employee organizations. And they're watching carefully what we're doing and how we, how we apply those concessions because, and they will probably ask for some kind of no layoff provision, I would expect from SEIU, it's something we'll have to deal with. But we will be meeting with you soon as we go into those negotiations to, and, and that's a big key, I think, to closing this deficit, is working with those organizations. We're hoping to try and reduce the number of furlough days that we have had the last couple of years. It's impacted our ability to provide services to the community. I still think we're going to need to do that, but our goal at this point, and again, it's, it's still preliminary, would be to have less furlough days, which would mean less level of concessions from the employees that we, than we currently have. I know that the council has said that you would like to have us maintain or even enhance the police presence. First, I think it's important to know that, you know, we have had a lot of vacancies for two reasons. One, it's been hard to get folks in academies. For a while, a lot of agencies were not sending folks to academies. And so we, we, we now have, I think it's eight or nine people in the academy. We've also had a, a lot of folks out on injured duty. And I, and I think you're going to see that just as folks start getting on the street, that you will see that presence in the community. And at this point, I've asked Frank Mannix to give you a brief, five-minute kind of presentation on just where we are on police hiring and what we can expect to see there over the next couple of months in terms of as we get folks on the street.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council. I just want to take a few moments to give you kind of a snapshot of where we are in terms of police staffing and police hiring. It's sometimes helpful to look at our, to look at our staffing levels as three subsets of each other: authorized strength, operational strength, and functional strength. Authorized strength are the number of police positions which have been authorized in the budget and approved by council. Operational strength is the number we've essentially hired out of authorized strength. And then functional strength are the number of officers who actually report to duty. So if we look at our operational strength, the people we've hired, and we subtract out those who are still in training in the police academy, those who are on leave for some reason, military leave, administrative leave, sick leave, injured-on-duty leave, all those create a reduction in our operational strength. And then finally, functional strength, again, is the number of officers who actually report to duty. So we can take a little look here at where we were in fiscal year ten and then the beginning of this fiscal year. We see that in fiscal year ten, we were authorized one hundred and forty. Of the one hundred and forty, we had hired one hundred and thirty-three, and of the one hundred and thirty-three, we had one hundred and twenty-one who were able to report to duty. Now, the functional strength will vary day to day, because officers get injured, they go out on injured list, they recover, they come back, people's military leave ends, vacation leave ends, et cetera, et cetera. But it is the authorized strength and the operational strength which really impacts our functional strength. As we see in fiscal year eleven, we had to reduce the size of the department by three officers. However, those were vacant positions which were not filled. If you'll notice, in fiscal year ten, under operational strength, we had one hundred and thirty-three, so we had essentially seven vacant positions at that time. So of the three that we reduced, all were vacant positions. And then in the beginning of the fiscal year, once again, our operational strength and our functional strength were essentially unchanged. Next slide, please. This is an update as of today. As you can see, the authorized strength has actually been increased by four positions because the city administrator has granted us permission to hire four over our authorized strength. As you may recall, when the budget was passed, there was an appropriated reserve to allow for this contingency. But more importantly, looking at the operational strength for those three years, what you'll notice is we've gone from one thirty-three to one thirty-nine. So due to an aggressive hiring campaign, we've been able to fill more positions, which has been a very difficult thing to do. Of the three or four hundred people who take the written exam, maybe we'll get about ten or twelve that will meet all the criteria and we're able to send to the academy. So it's a real challenge to work on that. It's a challenge we've been meeting, and I think that's a good sign. You can see in the last three years, it's the first time we've been able to push that number up to one thirty-nine. But you'll notice the functional strength has actually decreased. So if we look down at the very bottom, you'll see twenty-one positions, and that twenty-one is comprised of two numbers, a good number and a bad number. The good number is eleven officers are in training or the academy. So that number is high because we've put a lot of officers in background, we've got them in the academy, and over the next several months, they'll be coming out and hitting the streets. So we're pretty happy about that eleven number. The bad number is the injury other list of ten. Obviously, when officers get injured, that's always an unhappy thing. When officers are leaving to go to military leave, administrative leave, we have three officers who are currently assigned to our dispatch unit, so that's part of that number. I'd like to point out, they are assigned to dispatch not because of an unavailable number of dispatch slots that we're able to fill. We have plenty of vacancies, plenty of positions in dispatch. What we don't have are enough qualified people that we're able to find to fill those positions. So the officers tend to be a pretty quick train because they're so familiar with radio codes and police procedures that we're able to train them to do the dispatch function rather quickly, so we use them as a stop-gap measure in dispatch, but it does contribute to that list. So of those twenty-one pictures, pictures, police positions, this is how the department is encumbering those positions. So as those positions return to the streets, another way of looking at this slide are, these are the areas where we look to increase. We have four B coordinator positions, some in team strength, nine in team strength. There's two detective positions, the dare officer position, we've had to pull back basically into team strength so we can keep our patrol response times at acceptable levels. The PAL officer has been returned, but the PAL program is still continuing, I'd like to point that out. The school resource officer has been on injury for over a year. One traffic officer has basically been returned to team strength so we can keep our team strength not too badly under, we need to keep it between forty-five and fifty, our team strength, is the point I'm trying to make. Next slide. The good news is, when we look at our Part One crime index, these are the major crimes that are reported to the FBI: rape, robbery, homicide, burglary, larceny theft, auto theft, and arson. We see that over a twenty-year window, the trend line is going down quite a bit. At one point, we had over six thousand Part One crimes. This has basically cut in half in the last few years. And then the chart at the very bottom, that blue bar graph, represents the number of officers that we've had hired during this timeframe. What I want to point out is, you know, we fluctuated from back in the eighties from nineteen forty, I'm sorry, one hundred and forty. We've increased to one hundred and fifty-two in two thousand, and then over the last ten years, we've attributed down to about one hundred and forty, and the crime rate has continued to drop in Santa Barbara. So I can't really say that crime rate is dependent upon the number of officers. What I can say is the number of officers predicts the level of service that we can provide, the amount of things that you can do for the community. Next slide.
Can you go back to the slide that had the operational-functional strength, that one? So, well, first thing, all due respect to Mr. Armstrong, he was implementing a policy of the council to overhire, so, you know, because I know that's something the council has said over and over again about overhiring when their positions vacant. When, so the one eighteen that's there, the eleven officers that are currently in training in the academy, so you said within the next couple of months. So by June of this year, will we see, instead of one eighteen, we'll basically see one hundred and twenty-nine on the street as functional strength? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes, and I can give you a more precise timeline on that. Is we have three officers who are in field training presently, actually, four officers, to take back, three brand-new hires, one, four officers who are currently in field training. Over the next three to four months, they will be out handling calls for service on their own as a fully functional police officer. We have two officers who will be graduating from the academy in another two or three months. After that, they will have a four-month field training window, and then they, too, will be out in the streets. So about six months for that group. And we have five officers who are in their first month of the academy. So they have five more months of the academy, then about a five-month training window, so about November for that.
Okay, so within a year, well, functional strength, it'll be ratcheted up over the course, so one chunk in a couple of months, it'll go from one eighteen to about one twenty-two. Another couple of months, it'll go from one twenty-two to one twenty-six, and then, or something like that, and then a few months after that, from one twenty-six to one twenty-nine.
Yes, we will see that benefit. And also, the injury list should diminish over the next few weeks because we've gotten some good news about some officers who will be returning to duty, so that also should be.
Right, because I think the real issue for the community out there is what the functional strength is. We can put whatever number in the budget, but really, it's the boots on the ground that people are going to look at. And when the functional strength goes up and you have more flexibility, you're keeping patrol levels, so you're keeping the number of officers on patrol out there. So that's not diminishing what, but what happens when the number of functional strength officers go down, you have to reassign the PAL officer or the B coordinator. So when that functional strength comes back up, you can then reassign those officers to those key positions. And so when, I just want to make that clear out there, because when people hear, "We used to have one hundred and fifty officers," what that was, was the authorized strength. It wasn't, and it wasn't necessarily the functional strength.
That's correct.
And to hear the comparison, "We used to have one hundred and fifty, and now we're down to one eighteen," that sounds dramatic. And in fact, that's not, they're not talking about the same thing. So I think when we want to talk about boots on the ground, we've got to be consistent in the functional strength number. And in order to get there, we need to have good authorized strength and good operational strength.
Right, and as this chart shows, with one thirty-nine, we can see that functional strength will start to exceed the levels what it has been for the last several years.
Right.
So we're headed in the right direction.
Okay.
That's the point.
Thank you for that clarification.
Two questions, Madam Mayor. First of all, I think it would be helpful, again, we've seen in the press, the apples-to-oranges comparison, obviously used to, for an agenda purpose, of somebody comparing the authorized strength of the peak time to the functional strength at its valley as to show the most dramatic possible comparison. It would be useful at some point in the future to have a functional strength chart similar to the history that you've been given, you gave, for example, on the history of authorized strength in one of those charts, in one of those previous charts.
Unfortunately, we don't keep track of functional strength because it varies on a daily basis. You know, on any given day, someone could be out on an injury for a week.
Understood, okay.
And we should point out that about five of those one hundred and fifty officer positions were grant-funded positions in the past that were always designed to be short-term positions.
Yes, exactly. Well, that's, again, another piece that, again, those of us that have been getting an education here, week by week, month by month, we appreciate that, but that information either disappears or changes as it goes out. The other question I have is about the three officers in dispatch. It would seem to me that that's one of the places where, talk about a cost-effective way to get three officers back into functional strength, it would be in getting three dispatchers. Can you tell us a little bit about that process and in a time when presumably unemployment is high, there might be an opportunity to get some more qualified folks for those positions?
We've had a few dispatchers leave in rather quick succession. One is retired after twenty-five years of service. One has left to take the bar exam, so she's out on a sabbatical. One is out on maternity leave. And we had to fill those positions, short-term stop-gap with police officers. However, the good news is, we're in the final stages of creating a training coordinator position in dispatch, because the bottleneck in dispatch is getting the qualified people trained, because it's such an unusual job. You know, people, even when they apply for the job, they're not quite sure what they're headed into. So we've decided to beef up our training program and really modernize it and revamp it with an effort of getting more people successfully through training. So we're very optimistic that this is going to work in the right direction.
Timeframe on that, that you see those three, like you're training, like you're overhiring as a manager, what would you see the future bringing there?
The person who's interested in taking the job as the training coordinator has indicated they'll be ready in a few weeks. Actually, this is the person who just retired from the police department. It's an hourly position, it'll be funded about twenty hours a week. We think this person is going to be able to give a lot of one-on-one instruction with the trainees and kind of get them through that difficult training hump. So we would imagine the next thirty days, we'll have this person on.
Again, the three positions, if you, do you see a time when those three officers that are now not in functional strength, getting back to functional strength, and so when?
It's difficult to say. It depends on how successful we are in getting the replacements to respond to training, but it could be as long as a year.
Okay, Mr. House and then Mr. Hotchkiss.
Deputy Chief Mannix, just, first of all, I want to say, I really appreciate this conversation, because just, when you look at the numbers, they just don't tell the whole story. It's complex. One of the things that we, we have eleven right now in the pipeline, but there was a time where there wasn't even an academy to send them to. Isn't that accurate? That was in the last cycle or so?
Right. Police agencies throughout the state were not training new officers, so academies were running vacant, and they were just not in session. We've taken kind of the extraordinary approach of sending our people all the way to San Bernardino Police Academy, a very good academy, but very far away, but they were in session, so we've done that. We have five who are in that academy right now, and we're planning to send more to the Ventura Academy in the spring.
That's great. And the three newest hires, as I understand, were lateral hires, they came in already, or they came in well-trained. We didn't have to send them to the academy, is that accurate?
That's correct. There's been several academies that have trained cadets, and as they completed their training, their sponsoring agencies had to downsize, so therefore, these cadets lost their appointments. And they were looking for police jobs, and we happened to have the good fortune of hiring, so we were able to quickly save that six-month training window and put them straight into our field training.
Well, I'm really glad that, and I'm also, is today's hearing televised, Mr. Armstrong? This is really important for the community at large to hear. This is a real effort that we're making to keep this force up to strength, and I really applaud your efforts.
Go back to the dispatch thing. Do you have enough candidates now, or are you looking for more candidates? We've got a PSA going here, if you want.
We're always accepting applications. HR accepts applications for dispatch ongoing, so we're always taking them. We've got the vacancies, so by all means, apply. We do have a pretty robust candidate list. It is an exhaustive process to get hired, but by all means, if you're interested in the job, please contact our department.
And what should somebody's, what are the qualifications going to be for dispatch?
They have to take a test called Critical, which tests their ability to multifunction, to test, to listen to information over a headset and type it into a computer. Basically, if you can pass that test, and then you can pass our background investigation, be of good moral character, then you're hirable.
Great. Different subject. To actually increase the size of the force so that we might have a dedicated gang, youth gang violence team, and maybe some dedicated to homeless or particular beats, we would need, as a council, to increase the authorized number, is that correct, of badge officers?
Yes and no. I'd like to point out, we do have a dedicated gang team. We have a dedicated field suppression unit called our gang suppression team. We also have an investigative unit, our youth services team, which are basically former field suppression officers who do all the investigative follow-up on gang work. And then our tactical patrol force is our bicycle officers. They are primarily responsible for suppressing transient street crime. And then we have a criminal impact team, which deals with specific crime blooms throughout the city. So we do have all these teams in place right now. To add to them, we would need to do two things primarily: get these officers off this training curve and into the black and whites, and then you can always do more with more officers.
Right, because we've had cries from Milpas area and from State Street saying, gee, you know, we need a full-time guy or guys or ladies down here. So I'm just trying to see the process that we need to do that, because I would love to support that. In fact, I've said that it would be a goal to hire ten more officers. I'm not sure that requires authorization increase or just more fulfillment of what we've got now.
Well, it would seem if, when the eleven officers in the training academy get on the street, there's your eleven new officers, that, I mean, in terms of, that was my point earlier, in terms of what the community is looking at, is not what the line item in the budget is, it's the number of boots on the ground.
Absolutely.
And so we've got to make sure that the functional strength reaches that authorized strength, is as close to that authorized strength as possible. And it seems like if we get to as close to the one, you know, the one forty-one that's authorized, then all the issues that the community is looking at will be resolved without adding money to the budget to add more officers. So it's really an issue of that gap between the functional strength and the authorized strength to get the community expectations met.
Right, that's the place to start. I see we've said something that has triggered the chief to step to the microphone, so I'd better shut up here.
I was going to try to be quiet, but my boss knows that's very impossible to do with me. Briefly, you know, we have gang suppression coverage, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, day and night. You know, our criminal impact team are dealing with the felons, the big felons, people on parole, adult probation. We make visits to them to make sure they're doing okay, and we do things like that. We work with parole and with probation. You know, our issue here is to keep everyone safe, and the department has strategized and prioritized to deal with the most violent predators in our community. And we've really, I believe, we've done a really good job of that. And we're hopeful that when the officers come back from injuries, that we can start doing those things. We do have the Milpas group, we have the downtown organization, we have a variety of groups of schools. We're juggling a lot of balls in the air, but through our comstat process, when we measure our crime trends and response times, we do move people around almost daily, if not for sure monthly, to address the crimes of violence in our community. So we just So we just want to let the community know that in terms of the gang issue, we're on it seven days a week, seven nights a week. In terms of our Part One crimes, as you saw the stats, they're going down because of our Tactical Patrol Force, the issues with the homeless and the mentally ill, we're covering all of that. And fortunately, we have some great people to do it, and they're taking on a lot of extra stuff. But when we start getting these injuries back and people out of training, I think we're going to be very, very healthy to enhance all of those things that we already do. But in terms of the gang issue, we are completely on top of that.
Chief, you sent, you sent us an email, I think about a week ago, you did some statistical analysis of crime rates between last year and this year, and there was a reduction. And what was the number?
Eight percent.
So eight percent reduction in
In Part One crimes.
Part One crime over last year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So back.
Ms. Self.
I think Bendy made a good point about, you know, our functional and operational. It would help in this graph, because even though we had authorized so many, taking out the illness which fluctuates, quite often, there were vacant positions that were never filled through the year. And so, having that as a benchmark could tell us a great deal of information, because if we authorized 140, but we only, we never filled six positions, then it's a more accurate representation of what our boots on the ground were.
There's some value in that. I would like to point out that the vacancy rate tends to ebb and flow over the fiscal year. So the vacancy rate on the first day of the fiscal year might be seven officers, and then you hire four or five, and then two or three more retire. So you tend to get this ebb and flow between values, so it might be, might be hard to really look at that constructively.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So back in terms of priorities, again, and I purposely use the term up here, enhanced police presence, because I think that's what I'm hearing from the community. They want to see more folks, and I'm hoping with the folks we get on the ground that you'll see that. A couple other things that we're looking at, and one of these is a stretch, but we are looking at the possible use of RDA funds to enhance police presence in the RDA area and along the waterfront. It's illegal under current redevelopment law to basically fund city operations. We have talked to a couple agencies that have developed, I guess they would call it programmatic things, where basically it's a three-year program to deal with specific issues. And we're talking with the city attorney that if RDA stays, that we could potentially do this, and basically, for a specific purpose, we could use officers, and it would be for a defined period of time. Similar, if you think about it, with what we did with the Downtown Organization, where for a certain period of time, we had a contract to fund cultural arts things. It is a stretch. We admit it's a stretch, but at least it's something to look at, and we're looking at that. As Bob mentioned, one of the real problems we have here is the PERS costs are just hammering us so that, and especially in public safety, and I think that's really affecting our ability to continue to fund the operations even where we are. I have also asked the department to look at, is there a way to use more non-sworn people to do some of the duties that sworn officers do now? A lot of police activity is, is when there are cold crimes, for example, taking burglary reports, accident reports, that may not require a sworn officer to do. And some agencies use, they call them community service officers or other folks that, in terms of total compensation, are probably half of what a sworn police officer does. And I think there's some opportunities there to look at that in order to have, use the sworn folks we have more effectively in terms of being out there and responding. So that's something else we're looking at. Other priorities, infrastructure. As Bob said, we're hoping if we, if we can get the concessions from the unions and everything else, to try and get a little more money towards infrastructure. You know, we had our Infrastructure Financing Committee a few years ago that really identified this as a major area, especially in parks and recreation. We have just a number of old buildings and restrooms and playground facilities that are really in bad shape, and we need to put more in there. As you know, we're talking about a police facility. The other area that we're hoping, and it's under infrastructure, is our financial management system is on life support in terms of its, you know, it's a computer program that manages all of the city's finances, the payroll system, the accounts receivable, accounts payable, purchasing system. It's a pretty complicated system. It's written in a archaic programming language that very few people know, and it's a proprietary system that just we have, so it's not an off-the-shelf system. We had a plan to go forward. We did upgrade our utility billing system, but we're going to need to start working on this thing, because it's a three- or four-year process, and it's not going to be inexpensive.
And what, could you quantify that, that number, please?
About $3 million, about half of which would be a general fund obligation, the other half would be a enterprise op, enterprise fund responsibility. Also, in terms of other neighborhood and community priorities, clearly, the homeless issue is a priority, I think, for the council and for staff to somehow deal with that issue as best we can. Part of that's police activity, police efforts, but there's other areas. We're hoping to continue to maintain funding for the South Coast Gang Task Force efforts. As you know, we partnered with the City of Carpinteria, the City of Galita, the county, and we've got a new coordinator in. We've also been successful in getting a grant, I just want to mention that. And then, at this point, our intention is to maintain human services funding, community promotion funding, and arts funding at the same level, unless you give me different direction. As you recall, we cut community promotion funding last year by 10% in May. Most of that is the contract with the Convention and Visitor Bureau. That's, I think it's about a million, three, million, four. Also, the arts funding, we cut that by 10%, and I think the prior year, we cut it by 6%. So we're hoping to maintain it at a level funding this next year, but appreciate your feedback on that. And with that, so that's kind of what we've identified as priorities for next year. And I think it's really important to recognize, we've got a couple more months of work to do to put the budget together, so we're not presenting a budget document to you, but we're looking for your feedback. And also, in terms of the revenues, we're, you know, every month, as soon as we get revenues in, we then look at what we have, and we look at, do we need to recalculate these? We're working with each one of the departments, and each department has some unique issues. As Bob mentioned, in the Fire Department, we, we really have had a big hit, because mutual aid revenues have dropped dramatically. That affected their budget, so we're having to deal with that in terms of, even this year, you're probably going to see a mid-year adjustment in Fire. We also had some injuries there. So there's some unique things going on in each one of the departments that we're also trying to deal with.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. You know, I didn't see any speaker slips out there. I want to make sure, because it is a public meeting. Mr. Burke, if you wanted to come up, Mr. Westby? Okay. I'm gonna, I don't, you don't have a timer, but I see a second hand over there for two minutes and, no. Nice try.
No, thank you.
And make sure that green light is on, so your mic is on, on the, okay. And this is Jim Westby for the record, yeah.
Yeah, my name is Jim Westby. Oh, I see. My name's Jim Westby, and first of all, I'd like to make a comment on what Councilman White said about overspending the, I call them the rainy day funds. If you look at that chart, in 2004, '05, '06, and '07, when years were good, we overspent. And then when years turned bad, there wasn't anything left for us. And that's, we should never make that mistake again. I think this is a lessons learned that we need to go to, go to speed on, so we don't let that happen to us. I'm mainly here to support the public safety issue that Jim was talking about, and I really like some of the ideas he's talked about up there. We've got to get this, this strength up to, like you said, Mayor, to the authorized strength. Having 118, when we're authorized 140, is ridiculous, you know? So we got to figure out a way to do that. When somebody goes on sick leave, we got to replace them, you know, unless it's a short-term one-weeker or something like that. We got to have people that can replace them. And I realize, police officers aren't sitting on the bench. So how do we get them sitting on the bench? We got to, we got to forecast things out there so that we've got them coming through training. We can't wait two years to get them through police academies, so finally, we can get them out there and support the, support public safety for the community. I think there's a lot of other ideas. For instance, the club scene, you know, that we have a lot of police activity in a club scene on weekend nights. That's in the RDA area. Maybe this is something that Jim's idea of trying to get RDA funds down there. But when the club scene's going on, and if there's a crime someplace else in the city, you know, all the, all the effort is down there supervising that.
You have 15 seconds.
Oh, geez. Okay. I also think more use of part-time. I think the idea of outsourcing some of these things, some of these technology things, if you're getting ready to invest $3 million, is this a time to outsource the financial processing of our payroll, et cetera, et cetera? Or should we invest $3 million? You know, those are the kind of things I think we need to go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burke? I have to say, you two look a lot alike.
He's better-looking.
He's got the glass, the hair, yeah, the whole thing.
My name is Robert Burke, and I have questions and just blurb comments, not a speech to make. I remember during one of the council meetings, when the police got up, they, the number was, the number you have was what, 133? I forget what it is now. I would like to see a description of how many police are on the street, and does that vary during the day? Does that affect, this is a budget meeting, does that affect the finances of supporting the police? Is their relationship like at midnight? Do they have more police than fewer? And is that a relevant, even a relevant question? A relevant question for the budget is, when would we have too many police? Is it possible, given there were no budget constraints, would it be, you know, have, has the police department entertained the notion of, when would we be too obvious? When would we be looking more like, you know, there's just too many people that would be, might be oppressive or appear to be oppressive to the, to the citizens? Another question, I just happened to be looking on the web about the child molester, you know, how many child molesters reside within the city, and I was surprised, I thought, you know, here, there. And when I looked even in my own immediate area, within a few blocks, three to 10 blocks, that there was, I was just surprised how many. Does the police department have jurisdiction over monitoring these people? Do they? Would that affect the funding? And I do want to make one plug. I know people, where they live, they always want more police because of this or that. I'm on walk up and down State Street about two or three times a week. I'm very concerned about the skateboarders, and some of them, how fast they go. One, I usually get, when I stop and ask them, you know, not to use the
You have 15 seconds.
When I ask them not to use the skateboard, I get one of two replies. One is belligerent, you know, get out of my way, you know? And sometimes I even get the loser salute. And the other is, oh, I'm new to the area, I'm sorry, thank you for the information. And I point out the little brown thing there. So I appreciate your attention. If I could, if you think appropriate, I'd like to hear some response from the police on some of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if they're brief answers, but we can get that to you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, it's to the council for direction, feedback. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick comment on Mr. Armstrong's comment about other communities, and I realize from talking to other communities that we are actually in better shape than a lot of places are. The good news is, well, the bad news is, we don't have a manufacturing base, which is also the good news, because we didn't take the huge dip that a lot of places that have manufacturing bases do. But what I'm saying is that we have a very strong tourism industry support system here. And so, that we talk about things like our parks, our appearance, our cleanliness, and our police force out on the street, it's not just fluff, it's part of the economic driver. And if we're going to keep this community vibrant and alive, keep our economic engine alive, so that we can support a lot of these programs, those aren't just extra things, those are the thing. Those are part of the engine. So when parks maintenance comes before us, for example, it's a huge thing, because that's a big part of who we are, and that's a big part of our appearance. We're a very physically beautiful community, and the other elements have to go along with it for us to maintain that, for us to continue to attract visitors that are going to eventually bring us the kind of dollars that we need to run the community and the services that we have.
Thank you. I'm just going to go down. Mr. Hotchkiss or Mr. White, any comments? Mr. House? Go ahead, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Sure, just briefly. I very much appreciate Mr. Armstrong's creative thinking in support of public safety. The RDA thing sounds great, we better do it fast, legally. And I really have nothing other to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Anything?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think, first of all, to hearken back to the, Mr. Armstrong mentioned the, the infrastructure report of a few years ago, and we're not, we're not really, even at a million, going from, going to $1 million a year, we're not cracking that nut. My recollection is that the, that the maintenance proportion of that, of that infrastructure report was a million and a half a year, something like that, much less the bigger depreciation element. So that's, that just still remains to me a real concern, and obviously, the, the police headquarters, that's a wake-up call. It appears to me that that building is not going to survive a 1925 earthquake and that kind of thing. It really, really troubles me, and I think it is something that we need to continue. We're building an education base on that. Lord knows where that money comes from, but that's just, it's of deep concern to me. Mr. Westby mentioned the Fun Zone, and I know that in the very, over the last couple of years, I've heard suggestions to tax the, the enterprises down there that call on, that really are the basis of those extra services. I'd appreciate hearing about that, whether, the legalities of it, eh, and also the logistics of it, if it, if it has any, any legal basis. And I want to also thank having, coming on board as a councilman last year, and listen, and then jumping into a budget that was falling off a cliff, or had fallen off a cliff. The fact that, that this management team stepped up with the proposal to overhire when money was tight, and, and we didn't know whether it was going to get tighter, or we didn't know where this was exactly going, but that, that staff stepped up with that recommendation, and that obviously, the council responded to it. We're getting the benefit of that now. It's, that's the kind of lead times it takes, and, and I appreciate that very much, because the community is having, we have an outcry about, well, obviously, the biggest portion of this session today was about law enforcement, but the, the fact that that effort was, was made in a, in a very dark time is, was turning out to be a very successful move, and I want to thank you for that. I would appreciate hearing a little bit, Mr. Westby. The other idea that he mentioned was outsourcing the financing. It scares me, I have to say, that, because that's something I would, in my own home, I want to have complete control over, but at least, it is an opportunity to see whether that could work. And finally, questions I was asking earlier about PERS and about the, the third year in the negotiations and in the contract that we have, as I recall, there is some flexibility, and maybe Mr. Armstrong was alluding to that in the comments, that in that third year, while now, there's a schedule for those rates, those salaries and so forth to go up, there is at least a possibility for, for renegotiation there, as I recall. And so, is there, have any other, is there anything more clarification on that, or we're just waiting, wait till that day comes?
I think in the third year, on that 2000, fiscal year 2014, that's, I think that's when we're going to need to have that discussion with you and also with the labor associations, and because it does go up dramatically, it's going up dramatically all, you know, until we get there, but then, when those concessions go away, I think that's, we're going to need to have that discussion, and a very serious one.
And, and by the way, I want to also just second Mr. Rouse's comments about our parks, where it's just the fraying, the fraying has gone from around the edges to, to deeper within them, and it is, it is part of our business base. I can, I can hearken back to the day when people thought of tourists as kind of an annoyance, and, and of course, that, we now see what, what a critical, a golden goose that is, not only to our tourists, but to our residents who live here by choice. They can live anywhere in the world, and they, they choose Santa Barbara for, for reasons including the parks. And so, it is, it is critical that we find ways to keep that as beautiful as possible.
Mr. House?
Yeah, and just to take that point one step further, I mean, to those who really depend on and use the services that are available to them, the after-school programs and the, and the things that really begin to be both preventative in terms of avoiding, for the youth in particular, avoiding getting into trouble in the first place, but also for our seniors who really depend on these resources. So, a couple of things to say. One, I really appreciate each of the departments making a list and helping us to see what has been the cost of our having to cut so deeply. But I like Deputy Chief Mannix's perspective on the current service reduction slide that you showed us, that in a way, this is a way of looking at the priorities over the next few years, if we have opportunities to backfill in these areas. And I think that's really a way we need to look at these things. And I would hope that as we move towards our, this year's budget, and the next year, and the year after, that we really begin to have each department, all of us here as well, look at what are those really essential things that we've had to cut, and by efficiencies and by other ways, we have not been able to put back, and what are those priorities? So that as we have that ability, we can put those things back in place a little bit at a time, and reconstruct what is, what are very essential services for the community at large. I do appreciate seeing this trend line on the Part I crimes, and it's really heartening, and it really shows the effectiveness of our force and our ability to use the resources that they have so, so well. You know, the last time we had a super-low point in our, in the staffing of the police department was in the 2004, 2005 time, and going into 2006. And I recall, and this is to Mr. White, I recall my colleagues on council, as I was the new guy here, authorizing the 140 level and holding that firm all the way through. And then over the last couple of years, we've called for the over-hiring as a fundamental strategy, because we knew there's this lag, this crazy, you know, people coming and going, and that we need to really plan for that and try to get it up as close to the authorized strength as possible. So, I appreciate the policy board's support for that all the way through. But I don't, last point, I just don't think we should only, that we should not forget how important library services are, and the Parks and Recreation Department, these are the ones that really take the hit from these cuts in the general fund. They have no place else really to go for the revenues. If they increase fees, they diminish participation, which is counterproductive. We've got to find some ways to prioritize the services that are absolutely essential, and as we have the ability, put them back in just incrementally, one at a time. So, I'm looking forward to that opportunity over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was driving down to this meeting today, driving down Anacapa Street, looking out at the ocean and seeing another sparkling, beautiful day in Santa Barbara, it's hard to believe that a state with this many natural resources and this many human resources could be bankrupt, and that's what we are. We haven't admitted it yet, but we are. It's impossible for me to imagine how a state with so many things going for it could have an unemployment rate of over 12% right now. How can that be? 50 years of mismanagement will do it, and that's what it took to wreck the Golden State. Our city is a microcosm of that. We have city government, county government, and state government, staffed by politicians, supported by the public employee unions and the trade unions, and they're destroying this state. I think one of the most interesting slides that was presented today was the one about labor costs going up steadily, 4.4% projected every year. Good years and bad. The cost of public employment goes up relentlessly, because we, city councils, county supervisors, state legislators, have not controlled those costs, and that's what we have to do. Mr. Armstrong said he would like to see fewer furloughs. I want to see no furloughs. We are not going to continue to reduce services to the people in this city in order to maintain unrealistic, unsustainable, unsupportable levels of wages and benefits. I think there are probably people in this city who had no idea that we will soon be contributing an amount to public safety pensions equal to half of the salary. And don't get me wrong, I love our police, I love our fire department, great people. We can't afford those levels of benefits. We can't afford it as a city, we can't afford it as a state. So, there are going to be some changes. In that slide showing key milestones in the budget, Mr. Armstrong, with all due respect, there's one bullet that's missing there. The first bullet is council direction. We, as a council, cannot sit here and wait passively for three months to hear what the budget is going to be. We cannot accept a status quo budget. There need to be changes. As far as the police department is concerned, the authorized strength needs to be increased. We will always have people out on sick leave, we'll have people injured, we'll have people called up for the armed services. We can't predict what those numbers are going to be. The only way we can be sure that we have the things that we need, and the things that we need include having beat coordinators, for instance. Right now, the city, the city's organized in seven beats, we have one beat coordinator, that is not enough. And I'm not saying that necessarily all of these positions need to be sworn positions. All these jobs don't necessarily need a badge, but they need a person. I'm more than willing to look at police department operations and say, how can we take someone who has a badge and get him out on the street and replace what he's doing right now with a civilian? Obviously, the dispatcher's the most obvious example of that, but I'm sure there are others. I'm more than willing to look at that. But I don't think that we will get the level of public safety we need without increasing the authorized strength of the police department. People expect police presence on State Street, on the waterfront, on Milpus. We need it, and we have to figure out how to get there. Obviously, revenues are not increasing, so we will not get the increased police force that we need without trimming elsewhere. So, we have to take a serious look in every department and say, what are the things that are nice to have, and what are the things that are vital? The absolute requirements of city government are public safety and public health. That means police, fire, water, sewer, streets. Everything else is a luxury, a vital luxury in some cases, I don't deny that, but those are the things that we have to get right first. So, I hope, Jim, that you and the department heads, because I know you're great managers, very, very competent people, I hope that you will be taking a serious look at city operations and saying, what's primary, what's secondary, and what's tertiary? And I'll give you some examples. How large a transportation department does a city that is not growing, is not building roads, and is not responsible for mass transit? How big a transportation department do we need? Are there possibilities for trimming environmental services, where the county is already doing a lot of the work that I feel we needlessly duplicate? Solid Waste being a perfect example. We have one of the highest per capita planning departments of any city in the state, and I realize that we've had this seemingly endless general plan process, but hopefully, that's coming to an end soon. So, my feeling is that this city is facing critical problems, public safety being the highest, in my view, and we need a larger police force, and we're not going to have higher revenue, so that money has to come from somewhere. So, in my view, that is the direction that I would like to give to the administration. We have to find the money for more police officers, and we have to find the money for more staff. It was heartbreaking to me two years ago, when we let go an IT person in the, in the police department, when we let go support staff, we let four people go. And the things that those people were doing, the range master, for instance, the things that those people were doing, those have to be filled somehow or other, and it means reduced effectiveness of our patrol force, when we don't have enough civilians supporting. So, this is something that I think we, as a council, we need another meeting, maybe another two, maybe another three meetings on this, but we, as a council, really need to have a discussion about what the priorities are for this city, and that needs to come before detailed work on the budget, in my view. And again, I want to make it clear, we have a lot of fantastic people working for the city, we have a fantastic management team here, but we, as a council, have a responsibility to set the direction, and we cannot afford to go along with status quo. Thank you.
Yourself?
Boy, it's going to be hard to go after that. I agree with everything that Mr. Francisco has just said. We used to have volunteers that worked hand-in-hand with the police department. Why did they go away? They were a vital resource to not only help our tourists, but to alert the police for something that might need their attention. I've tried, because I'm an information, I want the information person, to get accident data from the police department. We don't have someone there unless there is a major accident, and usually with bodily injury, where accidents are reported. We don't have the data. It's sketchy. We are asked to approve intersection changes without having the necessary information to justify if it's necessary or not, and that doesn't need to be a sworn. I've been talking to staff in a lot of these departments. When I was previously, had jobs where I dealt with managers representing my company, you find out a lot more by asking staff. Management doesn't always recognize what they need, and I know we have a lot of good and dedicated managers. This is not to criticize them, but many times, staff is reluctant to tell a manager that something that has been implemented in all the best intentions has actually slowed their productivity. And so, you know, it's, I think those kind of overhauls can help us be more efficient. I've received a lot of calls about the shabby appearance of parks. Drive up State Street, go from Mission to Constance. It's a mess. It's dry, there's no watering, you know, at least pull out the dead stuff. Go over and look at the traffic calming over on the east side. You would not want that in your neighborhood. We should not be putting in more. Go down by Cabrillo with the new plantings. It's already in disrepair. We were a beautiful city before we decided we would have a plant on every bollabout. And I would say, as things get shabby, it is not an improvement to our city. I don't think any of us personally would put something in that we knowingly couldn't maintain, that it would end up being a detriment rather than a benefit. And I just want to lastly talk to, I've heard other people say, as Mr. White has, that we should tax the entertainment district. Government is very creative, they're going to be taxing your, everything. I don't think that they should be taxed extra, even though they take more resources. I think a better way to deal with it is to eliminate by attrition those licenses that are so concentrated. I think we need to do better enforcement of our noise regulations and clamp down on what's going on. Again, talking to boots-on-the-ground, that one officer should not go into a club, he needs backup. And because of the forces stretched so thin, they're getting away with much more than our zoning and regulations allow. And this is not a criticism to the police, this is just the fact of not having enough people and needing to be stretched too thin. But I think, again, I really appreciate our managers and what they're doing, but like many businesses have had to do, they have had to cut deep. And we are spending their money, the people who have lost jobs in this community. So, we need to better, be better stewards, and I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Francisco about prioritizing. We do that in our personal lives. We don't put in the new bathroom when the roof is leaking. So, we just need to take that kind of pragmatic, practical approach and start being more efficient. Thank you.
I'll just end on my comments. Well, first to put in context, thank you for the presentation, and I think it was worth going over the basics, Mr. Samario, I don't think that was time wasted. I think it was important for us to have a reminder of that, for the community watching to get, you know, the past experience of where, how we got to today, and where we want to go from here, which was, which was helpful. And to see where we are today with a projected deficit of $3 million compared to the 8.9 gap we had last year, compared to $80 million, I think, for the county of Santa Barbara, compared to $25 billion for the state, you know, relatively, we still have our challenges, of course, and we, and we have to obviously find a way that we can have a balanced budget without significantly curtailing services. But in the bigger context of things, we are doing much better than, I think, because of the work this council has done, and past, previous councils have done the last couple of years, and the work that, that came from your expertise in bringing the budget forward. So, I appreciate that. We still have a challenge ahead of us, obviously. And I, I actually resonated a lot with what Mr. Rouse said early on about, who are we as Santa Barbara? What do we want to be as a city? And, you know, what is our identity in terms of the residents and what they come to expect, and how do we pay for that? And how we do pay for that is being a gorgeous, beautiful, safe, well-run city. And that does, of course, include public safety. I think we had a lot of conversation about how to optimize and be as efficient as we can with the budget that we have. If we do want to expand that budget, what I would suggest to my colleagues is tell me what to cut, because I agree that there aren't new revenues that are going to pay for it. We have to figure out where it is that we need to cut in order to make it happen. Some suggestions came up, but I don't see the amount that wants to increase in public safety, meaning the cuts that would be available so far. So, I look to those kind of analyses and suggestions, because it's not just an easy do this and do that, and it equals the same amount of people or services. But I also agree, and some mentioned, dealing with the beautiful part of our city, the maintenance of our city, the parks maintenance, I think, has been cut a little too much in the last couple of years. And the residual effect of that, I think, affects our overall revenues. If people don't feel that the parks are as stellar as they can be, they don't have to be absolutely perfect, pristine, but they need to be beautiful, and they need to look functional, and they need to be well-maintained, and we're there, and we're, you know, it's just, it's just, like you said, the fraying, I think Mr. White said, the fraying on the outside is kind of getting a little bigger. So, I think somehow we need to figure out, whether it's through paid staff, volunteer coordination, whatever the, whatever the issues may be, there's lots of opportunities, I think, for residents who can help the parks department, help the city, and being a part of, you know, maintaining their beautiful parks. That shouldn't be the only avenue, but, but maybe better coordination of efforts. You know, we do great work, for example, with Looking Good Santa Barbara, and big, big-time cleanups. Could we do more of that on a regular basis through our park system, for example? That's going to take oversight and staffing to do it, but I think, to me, the, to me, in terms of the budget, it's not the number of people in a, in a, in a department, it's what's the outcome? What's your, you want to get a results-based type of budget. What do we want to see in terms of crime rate? What do we want to see in terms of beautiful parks? What do we want to see in terms of how many homeless people we can get off State Street and get them into housing, or get them back related to families? And then go back from there and saying, here's- And, and then go back from there and saying, here's, here's the expectation, how are we going to get there? And it's not necessarily a number line item on the budget that's automatically going to get there, it's how, what the process is used in order to achieve the results. So that's how I look at the budget, and so looking at, and where there are gaps, that, and maybe staffing's one way to do it, and maybe other alternatives are a way to do that. I, if we do, we do have to look at SEIU and their general employees when we go into negotiations. Furloughs may still be an option, other, there may be other options. One thing I'll just put out right up front is, the one, the one complaint I got a couple, a few times during the holiday period, the end of the year, when, when city was pretty much closed down, beyond the essential services, was the closure of the libraries. And maybe perhaps there's some way we can work things around that, maybe it's not both libraries, maybe it's part of the time, if we're reducing the number of furlough days, that reduces that somehow. Maybe in that department, there's a better way to spread those cost savings out during the year as opposed to having the time when school's out, people want to use that service, they, they rely on that service, and it was closed for two weeks. That was kind of hard, and that was like, out of everything. The whole city, we were shut down, and, you know, things were kind of quiet, but that was the one comment I got back. And, and it would be great if we can open up on Mondays again. I think that's a big stretch for this next budget, but it's the kind of thing of the service that people want and what I hear back. The, and I, I would agree with your, your assessment about the human services and community promotions, the same reason as we talked about, about the Conference and Visitors Bureau and the Film Festival that's going on right now, we give them some funding. I mean, that, that is an investment coming back to us, whether it's in the form of community promotions and bringing in revenue from visitors and residents partaking in those events, or on the human services side, providing funding for essential emergency services that the city basically doesn't provide. It's actually a big privatization, and there's a lot of talk about privatizing certain services. To me, human services is one way of looking at that. We are, we are sending money to a multitude of organizations at much less rate of pay than we would do ourselves to provide essential services. So to me, to keep that level is really important. And if we could ever stretch, I'd love to see the graffiti abatement program come back. That was something I think we put together in 2006 or so, it was an additional position, it went away. That's lower on the totem pole for me, given everything else, but I just want to, you know, verbally add that back in, for, again, the same reason, about the impact of, of that has on the community and what we want to see as a city. Finally, and I've also mentioned the entertainment district assessment idea. I've mentioned it a couple of times, I know there are legal issues, and anything related to a tax, it's not us, we're not the ones that are going to tax people. If, if there's an opportunity or a suggestion, it goes to the voters, and the voters will tell us if they want it or not. But if, if there's no options even to, for them to look at, then, then that's not even something we can entertain. I think that's the debate going up in Sacramento, and we'll see how that pans out in June, but if you don't even give the voters the opportunity to, to tell us what they want, I think that's a disservice. So, so if there's something that seems to make sense, and something we could look into, then maybe that's something that we could look into, that, because again, what is the ultimate result that we want to see? So those are, those are my comments.
Madam Mayor, just one, one thing real quickly, I, I don't think this goes without saying, and I think Mr. Armstrong and the others that are in the top management of the city would, would agree with this. It is, it's pretty much a miracle, the way that the city turned, got ourselves through this last period. This has been very, very hard. We're not alone, certainly, but the city of Santa Barbara has risen to the challenge. It was due to the expertise and the dedication of the department heads and at every level down through the organization. It was in a complete true partnership with the bargaining units and their willingness to step up and to, in some cases, not even within their normal cycle of, where negotiation would be anticipated, but to step up and to work cooperatively with the city to achieve these results. That is going to be, and I, I add this as a very strong value from this one council member, I hope it's shared by the others here, that our way forward only will be through that kind of strong cooperative effort, where the esprit de corps of the organization continues to be high, the morale is high, the people that are working in each department who are picking up two or three jobs now, where they used to have just the one to take care of, and they're working against the, the steady stream of low revenue. It's going to take everybody pulling for it all the way along. And critically, it's very important that as we establish these priorities, we're listening closely to the practitioners, the people on the ground in direct contact with the constituents for what they know and see to be true, and to listen really well. So we're going to be prioritizing over the next few months here. That's what the budget process is. It is prioritizing, it's a, it's a moral exercise into what's important for our community, and each and every one of us is tasked to do this with all of our heart. But we can't do it alone and just from the dais. This is going to come from the ground up, from the community, through our staff, through our leaders in the staff, and we're going to really appreciate your input as we go along. So I just want to make sure that at least that set of values is out here on the table, is one of those that I'm carrying forward, and I hope that we can share as a council as a whole.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Staff, anything from you, Mr. Armstrong? Great. Okay. Well, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.